Wasn't sure if we're waiting for Steve. Are we just standing here or are we waiting for Steve? Folks, do we need a couple more minutes or do we feel ready to start? I have another couple of minutes if you feel like. James, do you need a couple more minutes or do we feel ready to start?
You can start this.
And let's not calling it shorter, we're just opening the meeting at 6:26 PM. Our work session regarding TGM code application for development code rewrite. And Rowan, I think this is all you.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors for time tonight. This is going to be a quick work session introduction to the planning department, to transportation growth management program and to the TGM code assistance program consequently. Okay, so we will begin with a short history of the North Plains Planning Department. The planning department is a very new department here at North Plains. Before 2022, planning was done almost entirely by consultants. And this was effective for a small town, but it was minimal focus on planning. They kept up with current planning requests. They were able to do specific long-range tasks at the direction of the planning commission or city council, but there was no formal process. There was no consistency within a North Plains department. In 2022, North Plains hired its first full-time staff planner, Steve Miller, as well as bringing on a RARE member. For those who are not aware, RARE stands for Resource Assistance for Rural Environments. It's an AmeriCorps program in collaboration with the University of Oregon. Provides local jurisdictions nonprofits with capacity building folks straight out of, usually straight out of university. And so that's an easy way to boost capacity for the city. And so with that improvement, we had a more moderate planning capacity. Current planning was handled majority in-house by staff planners with additional support by consultants. And that added additional capacity for long-range planning by consultants as well. At that time, the planning department was really being stood up. We were starting to see our own policies and procedures come into play, our own style of doing things and becoming more consistent with how the planning department was doing things. Now in 2025, we're a two-staffed department. I was hired on in 2024 out of the RARE program. And that has increased our capacity once again, another nice boost. We still work with consultants from 3J, as you all are well aware, for long-range planning. But now we handle current planning almost exclusively in-house and we're able to handle many of our long-range planning tasks in-house as well, such as small code updates. Like you would have seen in 2024, we had a major update to the sign code and then a minor update to fix some things that didn't get completely fleshed out in that update. And that was able to be done without significant drain on our capacity. So the planning program is becoming a lot more capable in that way. And we have a lot more formal ways of doing things, procedures that are becoming cemented now that we have had some boots-on-the-ground time to do things our way. And I'll serve now an introduction to our zoning and development code. And the zoning and development code is the biggest role the planning department has. It's the means by which the goals of the comprehensive plan are realized. That comprehensive plan is extremely vital to the running of the city and the development of the city. And the ZDC works as a regulatory code, uses Euclidean zones like the industrial district or high-density residential, low-density residential, highway, commercial, all examples of our Euclidean zones. Overlay districts like a historical floodplain overlay and specific use in development standards such as our design review standards for full-time family or our manufactured home standards or our street standards. All of those work together to guide development in North Plains with the hope that development is guided in a direction that is in alignment with the comprehensive plan. So that is essentially the goal of the zoning and development code. Switching gears a little bit and going outwards to our state-level partners. The TGM, our Transportation and Growth Management Program, is a collaboration between our Department of Transportation and our Department of Land Conservation and Development, which we're there as DLCD. And you'll hear that acronym a lot from the planning department. They're a very close partner of ours. And when we reached out with some concerns regarding our ZDC, we were directed to TGM and specifically to their many programs that deal with getting local governments to have planning and transportation as cohesive elements together, working for progressive community development. The code assistance program is one of many programs offered by TGM, but specifically applicable to North Plains because the program is targeted to help local governments identify and update regulations, in their own words, to promote efficient land use and transportation. And that's the nexus of this program. Unity projects are done either as one-phase or two-phase, depending on the level of assistance needed by the community. And the work is carried out by consultants, are hired by TGM, to do the work in collaboration with the local community. This program does not require a cash or in-kind match. Now, as I mentioned, a lot of collaboration is required with this program. In exchange for not having a cash or in-kind match, local staff are expected to be big contributors. We're expected to provide facilities and help facilitate meetings, do outreach and all of those things, in addition to providing the necessary assistance with the code drafting itself. So this is a very community-centered process. We've seen projects across the state from TGM as examples and are very encouraged by the level of assistance that they provide, the breadth of assistance that's provided and the level of community collaboration that we see in these programs. It's not unusual to see a code assistance program with at least six community meetings. They're very involved. And so a little bit more in-depth, I've spoken about the meeting the goals of the comprehensive plan using the ZDC. And we aren't entirely there with our current CDC. Our most pressing concern is the code usability. Currently, the code has areas where it directs applicants to maybe the wrong staff person or the standards are not really applicable. They might have been at one point, but they're no longer relevant. And these are little technical errors that while they can be moved around and worked around, it's best to clear them up when we have the opportunity. Our second concern is moving the code towards objective standards for housing. As you may be aware, the Oregon legislature has been working a lot on making housing development more efficient, on making housing development more affordable and feasible. And this has manifested itself as a lot of clear and objective standards, which our housing development standards are not always clear and objective. So this would be an opportunity for us to become more in line with the state and to really become more progressive in our residential development. Also put neighborhood character up there. And this is something we've seen in other code assistance projects that were done in similar-sized cities. There's ways for us to improve our code, different tools that maybe weren't available 20 years ago, that hadn't been thought up of, that we can use to better achieve our walkability goals, our bikeability goals, our, you know, small-town charm, that neighborhood community feel that is emphasized in our comprehensive plan. And then shifting sort of to the other part of the spectrum, our downtown and commercial development standards. In 2023, we did update our downtown development standards with the downtown improvement plan. There's more work to be done, as prescribed in that plan. And our commercial development standards can also be improved, just to modernize really. Our code has been that way for many years. And there's a lot of modern solutions that weren't being thought up when that code was implemented. So there's many opportunities just for general improvement in that area. One area that is less of a pressing concern for us, but something we have seen done, is amendments to the zoning map. There is a few areas that we would want to talk to the code assistance professionals about, and that is downtown cohesion, so working to create a consistent downtown zone, looking at areas where we could increase our housing capacity and utilize our housing zones better and increase development potential through select rezoning if and when it is applicable. And that was a lot of qualitative rambling about what the code means and what it can do and what we can do better. But when we look at the nose-to-the-ground numbers, we did an analysis back in November, December of 2024. And these were the results we came out with. Nine percent of the code ranked poor or very poor on its accuracy, where people are expected to go to do certain things, what they're expected to provide, those sorts of errors. Thirteen percent of the code was poor, very poor for objectivity, being in line with the current standards for residential development. And the shocking number was thirty-eight percent of our code ranked poor or very poor on functionality. And that is a score based on how well the code moves forward, the goals of the comprehensive plan, the goals of the transportation system plan, parks plan, all of those elements that are the guiding documents of the city. We found thirty-eight percent to be not in line with that goal. Overall, we estimate that about sixty percent of the code needs updating and the code assistance project would probably impact about eighty percent of the code. And all of that boiled down to this request, a Type 1 small communities code assistance project done in two phases. The phases are an identify phase, where we do a lot of engagement, a lot of work with the consultants and the community coming together to identify where we need to change. And then Phase 2, where the code is drafted and goes through the process of working through amendments, suggestions and coming out with a complete code. The major areas of focus would be addressing Chapter 155, our zoning and development code, and the zoning map, improving accuracy first and ensuring our compliance with our planning law, and then adapting our zoning districts and standards to better serve the comprehensive plan, as well as within that comprehensive plan, really focusing on the efficiency and the attractive development that's consistent with what the community has told us and communicated to us, what they desire their North Plains to look like. We'll stop there with a lot of information. I'll take questions.
So you said, oh, so I'm sorry. What were, what requirements or constraints would TGM put on us? Or would that be staff constraints on it? Are they just doing the wake?
So TGM requires that the code that ends up being drafted as and is the final project, I will clarify, they'll provide us with a code. And TGM greatly hopes that that code is adopted. But adoption is not required as a result of this process. Of course, they want to hear from our planning commission, this body, that they intend to move forward with adoption. So it's not a waste of resources. But they will provide a code in the end. The constraints on that are that it's going to meet the TGM mission, goals and objectives. I have provided a copy of that document within your packet for you to reference. And really, the mission, goals and objectives of TGM are quite in line with our comprehensive plan. Staff do not think there's any reason to believe that we wouldn't be able to come to an agreement on a code.
Thank you.
I was going to ask, you've mentioned several of the guiding documents that are kind of the underlayment to these code revisions. And that obviously the TGM program would want to hear from council that we intend to adopt the code revisions. How do we resolve any potential disconnects with those foundational documents, which were put in place several years ago in some cases? And this current council's vision and the community engagement that was involved in the recent election? I'm very encouraged to hear that there will be more community meetings. But how can we also make sure that those guiding documents, which are going to be leveraged in order to create this code, also reflect current council goals and priorities?
Well, that's why this is a great collaborative process. And the community meetings are a big driver. Of course, TGM will receive a copy of all of our documents and those are going to be sort of our base layer foundation. But there's a lot of nothing to be done on top of that. Those guiding principles plus your mission statements and maybe Phil, you want to, I don't know if we're going to be doing any additional mission building for this council, but that might happen.
Put the goal setting, yeah.
Yeah, goal setting would layer on top of that community input would layer on top. We're building several, several layers of strong foundation, which should fill our house.
Okay, super. Thank you very much, of course.
It seems to me that this is, smaller towns are, have their planning and zones. And they're not changing to be distinct, like, oh, we want denser housing, we want more participation in all this stuff. So we're going to pay for it, to give you this code so that it's making it easy for you. A lot of the small communities don't want to have the state tell them what to do and how to do it, pack it tight. And this seems to be like carrot, like, hey, we'll do the, you won't pay for your consultants. You guys can afford it. Let's get tighter, more urban city. I think this feels that it's a carrot. Probably the district that's here does not want to go. Is this, is this, is this only it just to try to get us to have higher density housing?
Well, the program.
They feel like, we have nine percent that are terrible, but according to who? Yeah, right? So their ratings are, our codes are not very great, but we have bigger lots. It's a lot, we have to do the twelve-foot script of lots and really tight packing that people. See if this code's going to want, want to have that. And they're asking us, and before, that they want to let the agency officials to support this. I don't know, this is, yeah, maybe we want to buy.
I hear your concerns, counselor. I want to emphasize once again how much the collaborative process this is. And there is an emphasis on state goals. And there is an emphasis on specifically DLCD or ODOT goals in the TGM process. But this is ultimately to serve the community best. And that can be accomplished in many ways. Some of these projects are rather small in scope and some are rather large. If there's areas that we simply can't come to an agreement on, that's something that the consultants will work with us on. But as I said, collaborative process here. And ultimately, this council has the deciding vote on if anything gets adopted.
Are we on a timeline?
We are on an unofficial timeline. This is a rolling application. Applications are open whenever we please. However, we've been encouraged by TGM staff to get our application in soon because this project must go through the ODOT procurement process, which takes about six months of due diligence. And the TGM staff would hope that we would get that period done and be eligible for the funding bucket that opens with the new fiscal year. So they would really like to see this project. They're encouraged by this project. They like what we've had to show them so far. So they have encouraged us to get this in and be first or one of the first in line for that new funding bucket.
Are there any other alternatives to this grant to execute this work? For example, can we look at all of the areas of the code and prioritize and tackle high-priority items like chunks per quarter?
So we do have alternatives. There are no other grant programs available to us at this time based on our conversations with DLCD. And so that leaves us with self-funded options. So there's the option to hire a consultant team independently to do updates all at once. And then there's the option to use staff to do these updates. Now, we have been using staff to do code updates on an as-needed basis in the past. This takes a lot out of the two planning staff that we have. We also manage the current planning, as I mentioned, as well as other long-range planning tasks that may be going on. Adding these code updates on top, it takes a lot of time to do with a small team. It takes a lot of energy out of the team. And there's a lot more consideration with respect to our capacity when we talk about doing it in-house. I'll let Steve speak a little bit more to that.
Hi, Steve Miller, planning manager for the City of Rhode Island. Just to humble with that, when I came on in September of 22, one of the primary goals for the city at that time was to update the code. And so I was tasked with going out and seeking dollars that were available for this project. As Rowan has indicated, there weren't many options. We didn't have many sources available to us to be able to get some grand dollars to help with this code update. And as you saw by the numbers, we have a lot of deficiencies in our code right now. So this became the best available resource to us to try and address those concerns and try to bring this code into being a more modern code. As Rowan has shared with you, it is a clever process. And we'll start with the planning commission with a recommendation. We're going to come forward with a proposal. This is what we think would be a workable code with your assistance to be able to review it and provide comment on it. We would get hopefully plenty of people attending, reviewing the code and providing their thoughts. And then we would bring a recommendation from the planning commission for you folks to have the same type of meetings with the public to discuss the updated code. And then ultimately, for you folks to make the decision on what does get adopted at the city. But this code is very antiquated that we have right now. It's very outdated, has misreferences in it, it has incorrect references in it. And what the city has been trying to do before I arrived was essentially try to take them up on kind of a, I heard this is a problem, let's fix that. I heard this is a problem, let's fix that. So there's been no consistency with how the code has been updated. It hasn't been done in a comprehensive manner. It's been kind of an each update here and an each update there. So I think this is a really great opportunity with this grant program to be able to take the comprehensive look at the code and try to bring it more in line with current state law, as well as what the goals and objectives are of this current city council. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
I just want to make sure, planning commission can still write code as needs arise, even though we are applying for the grant? And even if we get the grant, can they still jump in? Kind of like, we have some urgent code that kind of needs to be taken care of. So another green light or another marijuana job that'd pop up again. So are they still able to?
Any codes that need to be urgently updated, something that's time-sensitive? We still have the capacity to conduct, to carry out those updates on an as-needed basis, as we did in November with the sign code.
Okay, would they step on their toes?
Anything emergent will be handled.
Which way now? That's the only one that's pressuring right now, that we're dealing with.
Thank you. So first off, I want to say thank you because you gave a very clear, concise and informative presentation and we're doing the same with the followers. So thank you. What I'm hearing though is there's some concerns that this is a state, that fears that it's state-driven mandates to make us become a different kind of city than we planned. However, I'm also hearing that we align this with our comprehensive plans and our goals going forward and the direction that we want and that we have final say on yes or no. And I think that is key. I don't think we have staff that, the capacity of staff to take this on and do the existing work as well. And I don't, and I think that if we as a council and staff remain aware of the goals that we have going forward, that we could utilize the funding in a way that's going to really support the city.
Thank you, counselor.
So my worry is that there's a lot of time saved and money saved with this. Like, oh, we're just going to do it for you or have to guide you along the way. However, their guidance may be that way. And your time is already used up, like guidance along the path. And it comes down to us, we waste all that time and money and effort, you guys are limited in resources chasing down density, right? So I'm kind of worried about that, so.
To build on what you just said, my concern is like, it does take capacity to manage a project of this significance too, right? And when we're also taking care of all of these construction projects and crossing eyes and dotting t's. And I mean, that, it's, it's, while it is taking, it's another resource to augment that. It's also a net new project to take on as well too. I mean, how realistic are we being?
All right, yeah, could you repeat the last part of your question?
While this, this grant would be aimed at augmenting capacity, it still takes capacity to manage another entity and process too. It's essentially another vendor, right? And another workflow. So it is a net new work stream that we would have to take on.
Yeah, the, so bringing on another project like this is an increase in workload for staff. However, it is much, much smaller than what would be required for us to go through and do the work ourselves. Managing a public engagement process is a two-person crew is difficult, bordering on infeasible for some tasks. Drafting code takes many, many hours. A single staff person for even a section of code can work weeks or even months. And so taking that level of capacity out is not necessarily feasible for us. Bringing in consultants really helps. I should also mention that there's a lot of added value in doing a code update in one fell swoop. If staff do it in-house, it's one piece by one piece, not necessarily cohesive with each other. If we can do it in one fell swoop, we know that it's going to be consistent on one set of missions and goals. We know that there's going to be consistent language used. And there's a lot of value in having that consistency in our current code. There's a lot of areas where we maybe don't have consistent definitions or things don't line up in terms of the way the language is used. So the ability to do this one fell swoop and then not have to go back and do it once a year, twice a year, three times a year for the next 10 years, that adds a lot of power to our planning department. Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that most jurisdictions, they have to be at least 10,000, a population of 10,000 or greater to even have the staff to take on this type of tasks. But it's false to your long-range planning staff. And we don't have a long-range planning staff. We have Rowan and myself. It's important if we're going to take on a project of this size that we use resources outside of the city to do that. We just don't have the capacity to handle that. And I do want to acknowledge that you would never see someone as an assistant planner taking on this task. So this is a real nod to Rowan and their ability to be able to manage something at this level as an assistant planner in their first year at a city. This, this is typically a senior planner-level project that somebody would take on. At a, at a long-range planning position at any other jurisdiction, Rowan and I manage both current planning, which is the day-to-day activity that we have to manage, as well as any long-range tasks that come in that we can take care of, such as the FEMA update, sign code update, little minor tweaks, but to actually update the entire code is a huge lift. And it would not be possible without a TGM grant for a city the size of North Plains to be able to do something like this. So I appreciate all the questions. But I know a lot of people have visited many planning departments on the city council. And they're usually much bigger than ours with many more people that have way more experience. And so again, awesome job, Rowan. It's incredible what you've been able to accomplish in just your short time here. And I think this is something that everybody recognizes as well needed. And it will be up to you folks, right, to help us through this. We're working in partnership with the council and we're working in partnership with the planning commission to try and run forward the best product for both the residents of the city to use, as well as the development that will be coming to the city to rely upon, right, to develop their projects in the city. So this is a huge document. It's very important to the city's future. And I think this is something that long past due.
Thank you. So Rowan, maybe just to synopsize some of what you've stated and maybe allay some concerns. Once this application is turned in, you know, this sounds like a packet of work and, you know, you're providing some information upfront. Can some updates be made during the process? For example, if some of these guiding documents were updated or if there were some other strategies that came out? Or, you know, what kind of touch points are there? And I'm kind of giving several questions at once, but keep track for me. Some touch points along the way that both North Plains Planning and the consultants who are potentially going to be engaged would have some established points where updates are going to be provided back. And we can make sure that, you know, that direction is palatable to the rest of council. You know, kind of the consultant oversight that you guys are going to have because you obviously are much more familiar with the North Plains goals and strategies than a consultant who's walking in cold. And then just my personal geeking out, I loved all the statistics, although they were a little horrifying, I understand. I'm curious if you guys have some kind of a relatively detailed issues list to go behind those statistics that, okay, you know, 60% of this didn't work. And here are some examples of that. How does this have a real-life impact on these three areas?
Yeah, to start with your question about checkpoints, touchpoints. So the great thing about this problem or program and a little bit of a double-edged sword is this is a slow process. Nothing quick about long-range planning. We'll submit our request letter and our current documents to TGM, depending on this process very soon, hopefully. And that will be really just the light switch, just turning on their process. They will go through all of their approval agreement to basically take us on. They are not agreeing to take on a certain scope of work. They're agreeing to take on the community and our update. They have to go through all the adoption agreement process. And after that happens, which would put us, based on this timeframe, somewhere around August through September, that is the time where we get to do our scope of work with TGM. And that scope of work includes defining what we'd like to address, the areas of concern, and then selecting from a pool of consultants that are approved for this work. After that happens, then we start work with the consultant and TGM together to formalize even further the scope of work. We're still not getting to the content of the update at this point. After that, we're looking probably around November at this point. That's when we can begin to schedule and to really start to look at the project as a by-this-date project. And that's the entrance point to Phase One. Phase One is where we start to get to content. And Phase One will probably take anywhere between six and 12 months to complete. At no point during this process is information set in stone. There, there is no, everything has to be this way at this point. Things are fluid. It makes it easier, a lot easier. We have a good idea of the direction we want to go by the time we start including the public in this process. We really would like to see planning commission and city council have a direction that they want to champion and be able to communicate that as bodies. But there is still a lot of fluidity in that process. All through Phase One, Phase Two is where we start getting to a little bit more of a firm idea of what we want to do because that's when the consultants have to start writing the code. They need to know what they're willing to write. And then as far as providing examples, we do have a list currently of a lot of our, those are mostly our technical concerns. But I also, as you've seen in the data analysis, everything is written out section by section. And we're more than capable of looking at our problem sections and pointing out what our concerns are with those for any councillor or commissioner that would like that information or like to see examples.
I appreciate that. I want to keep that light touch. If that ends up just being me who's curious, maybe we can have a quick chat. It's fine.
Yeah, those, those stats, those like 90% is terrible. Good example, like we said, it's, what do you talk about? You could say 45% of them, Dennis, agree. You're like, what do you mean, right? So what do these percentages, is there any kind of reference for these? And those are just, for me, those are just shockers.
Yes, so.
There's nothing really for.
Yeah, I will keep this a very brief so that we can get out of here on time. But the analysis was done qualitatively and then quantified it into a one-to-five scale on how decent the code was based on the three factors, accuracy, objectivity, and functionality. Those are the opinion of staff and we're trusting you as a body to view our professional opinion. There isn't really a way to quantify straight out any code. These are, you know, complex documents. So it does come down to a matter of professional opinion. And we're trusting you, hoping that you will trust us in that professional opinion. Steve, do you have any closing comments?
That's still very, very much where we're at. And what to ask is tonight for us is we see that the council would be willing to join us in this, at this task and update the code for the city.
I will close with later in the regular session, you will be presented with Resolution 2298, which is asking for your support of our assistance application and to commit to implementing the principles of transportation management. At that point, I will conclude my presentation. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Why don't we take just a minute or two? All right, folks, let's call this North Plains City Council meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Councillor Dumbrow?
Present.
Councillor Page?
Here.
Councillor Haggard?
Here.
Councillor McCall Wallace?
Here.
Councillor Pfeifert?
Present.
Councillor Ready?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. And we don't have a particular spot on the agenda for this, but we wanted to discuss an additional agenda item. Katie?
I'd like to add an agenda item, asking council to consider releasing the email that they received from Attorney Jacobs on January 15th. Perhaps under the new ideas, we could add it.
And we need a motion to, we have consensus that we can add that to the agenda and discuss it later.
Yes, that, yeah.
Yeah. Anybody? All right. There are no objections. Moving on to approval of minutes. Let's go ahead and put that under a new business, item 11. Moving on to approval of minutes. That one, unfortunately, I think we need to have a bit of a conversation about. Bill, do you know with Lori being out of office, where we stand with getting copies of those, with track changes and being able to understand what my decisions are made?
Thank you, Mayor. So when she comes, when she comes, I'll email her and see if I can get some information out of her. But one thing she did visit with me about before she left is in terms of council minutes and when there are edits to be made or things to be pointed out, the minutes are done with a software platform that doesn't let, there are, like, there are no track changes. There's no red lines. And it's the way it works.
It's not word, okay.
Yes, not word, exactly. So if there was the impression that it was worded and it could be redlined, like in a document, like a Word document, like many of us use it work every day, it doesn't work that way. So we'll have to work with you in some other way. But it's kind of a platform that's all kind of built into the city website. So minutes, agendas, calendar, everything's all tied together. So it doesn't have the same kind of Word document, Word processor platform. And that, and that ultimately kind of leads to, well then, how do you note specific, you know, edits kind of under those circumstances?
I would love to have a good collaborative conversation with you and Lori and figure out what that process can look like. I love that it's all part of the same platform, but gosh, I wish it had more functionality to it.
I can, no, I could totally appreciate that. I think, I think it's one of those things where getting it out there, you know, in agenda, on an agenda packet, on the calendar, you know, kind of all consistent for minutes purposes and then recording, recording purposes. It's kind of, you sacrifice the precision of treating it like a Word document for that framework.
Understood. And maybe there's some other, other municipalities that we could consult with and see how they've handled this issue. Yeah, I know there's also a city recorded professional organization. Reach out to them.
Yeah, no, Lori's very active in that, in that entity. She is a past officer. So that's certainly, that's something.
So for now, I think we are going to just not approve minutes. Do you need us to officially table that or how would you like to proceed?
By my me, I mean, any other format, we just kind of have a different set, a few sets of minutes.
I got a question over minutes, though. We have four different sessions of minutes here. Why do we have such a backlog of the minutes?
There were errors and then corrections made, but unfortunately, they're so extensive as far as how, the length of the documents, and no one has been able to say what was changed or what was fixed.
Looks, I had to read them all again. It looks pretty complete.
Is the.
I just moved and have a still minute to make you know of it.
Is there a statutory, like, is there something that we're concerned about that's going to give us some legal trouble? Because if not, I guess.
Yeah, the actual, so it's a special city, it's office. That's a question for me.
Yes, sorry.
There is an ORS on the substance of meetings. There, I'm sorry, the minutes for meetings, they're not designed to be verbatim.
Yeah, I'm ready to, to approve the minutes as stated to be in that one.
Second.
Or minutes, Mr. Geno meeting, all alone. So we can just finish it.
So to clarify, does this require unanimous consent, majority? Normally, it would be part of the consent agenda.
It's still a motion on the consent agenda. It offers the same way.
Okay, so.
It doesn't usually need a large public discussion because they're usually.
Right, okay.
First and second, everybody's going to say, all in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I, but I keyed in on something I heard about, actually say they're not designed to be verbatim. And that's maybe something we should talk about.
So all opposed, and I am opposed to this unfortunately, just because we haven't been able to get that granular detail. And I certainly want us to get on track with these, but we've got to understand what we're agreeing to. That's kind of the basic premise.
I also just want to make sure everyone's voice is heard. And if there's any hesitation, then.
Yeah. Okay, we'll continue to work with Lori and figure out what our options are. Okay, all right.
So, so can we finish out the question or what should we?
Well, we had a dissent, so I think that means that.
So we're looking for a majority in order to pass this agenda item. So it would make the most sense to me to do a vote to be able to accurately capture who voted on what. Vote it on the motion if I can finish. What the minutes require under the ORS is that the general substance of the discussion is supported, how individual counselors who are there and their individual votes, all those items need to be included in the minutes. So particularly in this instance where we have a number of counselors voting the affirmative and some of the negative, I would suggest we roll off them.
Councillor Ready?
Aye.
Councillor McCall Wallace?
Aye.
Councillor Page?
Aye.
Councillor Haggard?
Aye.
Councillor Pfeifert?
Aye.
Councillor Dumbrow?
Aye.
Mayor Goodwin?
Nay.
All heard, motion passes.
All right, and next we have public comment. And I know we didn't have cards today, but what have we got in the way of some? Okay, I'm going to say that all of these are under general comments. So let's go ahead and just run down the line. Travis Rubashow.
So some of you don't know me, some of you don't. But I'm actually coming to talk as a resident. I do work for Zibley Fiber, so I want to state that before I talk. Because I'm going to lose the wrong idea. However, I work from home, and I also run servers out of my own. So I work for jobs. One, as a mid-market account executive for Zibley Fiber. And then I run gaming servers, and I also run storage servers, all which are rented through me or off through me, all of that. Anyhow, our internet provider is down consistently, and it is interrupting my business consistently. Now, I went out and I called Lumen, because Lumen does Phase One for Sunset Ridge. And I said, hey, I really need service over here, you guys offer service, I'll walk away. Can you please extend your services? I even put down a hundred dollar deposit, and they still denied service. We have an empty conduit throughout our entire neighborhood. So there's three pipes per, I think, like, two blocks, three blocks. And we have the ability to have a brain network installed in our neighborhood. And unfortunately, Lumen is denying it. So then I called Quantum Fiber, come to find out, Lumen and Quantum Fiber are basically the same company. So they both denied this. So I'm left with strictly Comcast. My bill for just internet, internet alone, is almost $200 a month. And that's for a gig of it. And I don't even get that, I probably get like 600 to 700 megabyte download, but it's working at best every single night after midnight. My internet is out for at least two to three hours. My servers go down, I lose money every single night. Today, there was over 427 reports of the Pacific Northwest, sorry, in the Bethany location, all the way to North Plains, 427 reports of services being out today with Comcast. Guess how many were for Zibley? Fifteen. And it was just because owned equipment, and we still got them taken care of. So my issue is, what is North Plains going to do about a second provider? Because the right-of-way 5% taxation that is being implemented, that shouldn't even be a thing. That shouldn't be in place for internet, period. It's a utility, and that's what it is. It's not entertainment. That 5% taxation that's being charged, or whichever is being charged to Comcast, that's for entertainment services, that's for phone line services, that's for other things. Now, Zibley is a public utility, that is what it's simply aimed to be. That's why they got rid of entertainment services. That's why they made away with them, you can't have TV through us, period, nothing, just internet. Now, when the outage happened, you guys remember, it was like a few weeks ago, we all had no services for the whole day, and emergency services were down? Guess who fixed the Verizon towers? Zibley did. So now we're doing work at North Plains, for North Plains and for the Verizon towers, yet we're still not allowed to come in here because we've won't agree to the right-of-way 5% taxing. When I look at my Comcast bill, there is no tax for internet. So if you guys want to at least accept, you know, if you guys want 5%, sure, put it on the bill for the customer, because we're still a cheaper option, I should not pay nearly $200 for internet access. It's pissing me off, my carbon is not even that much. So, that's wild. But yeah, if you guys walk around Sunset Ridge, there is empty conduits for really any internet company to come in. And I've heard people say, oh, why don't you get Starlink? Why don't you, Starlink cannot sustain the things of the businesses that I have to run. It's satellite. So I'm trying to see what the city can do to allow Zibley to come in. We need to come in here and give people an option. So, yeah, that's basically it.
Appreciate you coming. And I am also an internet customer in North Plains, Oregon, so I understand the pain that you're describing. I think perhaps we can talk about this as a future, future action item to get in touch with the appropriate rep at Zibley and determine where things stand, what the current status is, and what barriers remain so that tackle, staff and council can potentially tackle things.
And Bill, does, does Zibley have a service contract, prices, fees, they're charging them?
No. No, so Zibley at the present time does not have service in North Plains, and we have not yet gotten an application for them for a right-of-way license to come into the city like other, any, any type of utility, any type of private, public, corporate utility that wants to come into the city and utilize public right-of-way for their wires, towers, whatever. We haven't gotten an application from, or welcome to, just like anybody else. They just haven't applied, and so we're open door, open arms, if they do, they just have.
Everyone that was here before, though, everyone, they were already here as in the right-of-way licensing came into play. So I don't think it's fair to have that in place, and then when Zibley comes in, we can't come in, because that's been implemented. Those other people were already here before that.
So, so if I might clarify, when the city council adopted the new licensing system like Hillsborough and Deverton and other cities have, we reached out to all of the utilities that have franchise, currently have franchise agreements, like Mr. Robichaud mentioned. And with our attorney structured it so that existing franchisees, franchises, existing utilities using city right-of-way would convert over to the licensing system when the term of their existing agreement expired, so that there's no unfair treatment. So, so, so we're just waiting basically for Zibley to...
Reach out.
To reach out, yeah, basically.
But that's where I come into, as a resident. Having that in place, it is preventing us from getting service, because Zibley clearly doesn't want to do that. And as someone who lives here, I have no, just so everyone knows, I have no benefit by Zibley coming here. I do not have a financial benefit to this. So however, it is really, really bad that my services are out all the time. So if Zibley can't come in and Zibley's not going to go with the ORS, which is, that's what they want to do, what are you guys going to do with Comcast? Because someone crashed into one hole, and that's all it took for our whole, whole network to go down. So unfortunately, I mean, I just got rear-ended the other day, and my car is in the shop, I have a rental. People crash all the time, they're going to be hitting poles more often. So when that happens again, what do we do? Where, where, where is our telecommunications going to be lined up next? So we only have one line. Someone goes up and cuts that line, if, I don't mean to say it like this, but if people are stealing copper, if they go up there and think that it's copper, and they go to chop the line and steal whatever's there, we're out again for another 24 hours or two days, three days. So what are your guys' plans if that happens again?
And respectfully, can I say this is public comment? See, it's not on the agenda.
Sorry, sorry.
You opened this up for the public and told the public that we're going to be talking about this.
Yes, sorry, it was more of a, just a...
I understand. So you have, and there's a lot of questions and concerns regarding that. I think that was already pointed out, that the first step would be to go through our city offices in terms of, you know, if there are places you want to apply, maybe they're watching tonight, they can apply. But in terms of public comment, it is not something we can action on, we can talk about, we can do. What we do is look forward to the opportunity to have that conversation with the public. So I think what I want to say, and I, and I mean that respectfully, is to say thank you for raising the issue for us all to do that.
All right. And then that's it?
No, I appreciate you coming, thank you for the good information. I think we've got a plan in place to get our arms around the situation, get some data to review, and then see how we can move forward.
Awesome.
All right, and I have all this public records laws. Yep, that's it.
Hi, Larry Gonzalez, I live in North Plains. Happy to be here, appreciate it. I am here because I love North Plains, as I'm sure you all do. And I know that you're, I want to be as helpful as I can. And in doing that, I want to point out, I think you're all taking bold steps. When you do that, you raise a lot of dust. You want people to focus on the steps you're taking and not the dust that gets raised. And I think from what I'm seeing, hearing, experiencing, I want to talk about Oregon public meeting laws and public record laws. Because as much as we all like to wing it, the reason that we have those laws in place is so that it gives all the community a chance to participate and to help you in making decisions for the city. A couple of things that I would mention would be, I think having a Facebook page is great. I love that you reached out to the community with Facebook. And, and Oregon public record laws say that if you have public comments on your Facebook page and you're identifying as a member of the city council or whatever, and you have public comment on the page, that's public record now. You have, that's a public forum, you have to, as a city, capture all of those comments. You can't erase them, you can't delete them, you've got to capture all of them, work with the city, with the recorder, with the city manager to make sure all this stuff is captured, because you will be fined if you don't. Because if somebody complains about it, that's all it takes is somebody complains, and the next thing you know, you got a fine from the city. So again, in the spirit of trying to help you do what you're doing, because I think it's really, really important that you get the community behind you and not like fighting you and nitpicking with every last little thing that you're trying to do, which I think would drive anybody crazy, including me. Another thing that I would say would be, you know, meeting outside of this forum, right? Whether it's two, three, four, five of you meeting outside the forum. Again, public meeting laws, good to be kind of versed in that. I'm sure League of Oregon Cities has some trainings for you, or has already started training with you about that. It's super important, because you don't want that to bite you in the butt, because again, painful fines, not necessary, you know, great, you know, great things. And lastly, because I think that I've been in a couple of other meetings, not necessarily here, where people are kind of, a public comment is public comment. It's not a debate. It's, you know, if I say some bad things about you individually or collectively, you, you know, it's, it's my opinion, my viewpoint, you don't have to agree with me. And it's also my First Amendment right to free speech, that you don't interrupt me and shut me down. And if you want to look at the, you know, New York Times versus Sullivan upheld that if, even if it's painfully critical of you, you still have to just give the person a chance to listen. You know, give the person a chance to talk, you listen, you don't have to debate or comment or agree or disagree. Just let them know that, thank you, we'll take that under advisement and move on. And I think that's a, that's a kind of words to live by. Keep you out of trouble making, you know, rash, impulsive comments that, you know, again, stir up dust. You don't need dust, you need to kind of move forward, take really, really bright steps for the city, and know that I'm supporting you, I want you guys to do great, right? And I think that's winding it up, thank you, even though they think I got 50 minutes.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Larry, I appreciate you bringing that to us, calm civility. All right, Patty Burns, Senior Center, and I can't read your last word. Okay.
Hello, everybody, I'm Patty Burns, and tonight my hat is chairperson for the Senior Center. And on Saturday, we have our crab fee here. And I am here to ask that you waive our rental fees for that event. That's it.
As a clarifying question, have those fees been waived in the past?
We've never paid fees, never.
Okay, and the process has been to come and have a conversation about it, and I guess we...
Never had to do that.
Okay, okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And next we've got Laura for the bank.
My other person is still outside.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Give me a second.
At the bottom.
All right, Lori Thuro.
My name is Lori. And we also have a family tomorrow, 89 years, that's two, two miles away from, from the North Plains city boundaries. I, I think it's important to be reminded about how we got here with the urban growth boundary lawsuits. I'm going to just speak a little bit about that. In September 2023, North Plains approved an urban growth boundary expansion that would bring 855 acres into the city limits.
Oh, is this going on tonight?
Yeah. Is it? Just started. Patty with this up there, looking to...
Sorry about that. Please go ahead.
North Plains Forensics Smart Growth gathered 278 signatures for a referendum, which meant that the proposed UGB expansion was put on the ballot. Just FYI, referendum in Oregon has been around since 1902, and it's the ability to bring a matter or an issue to the voters. And so the UGB expans, expansion was to be voted on in May of last year. In the meantime, though, in March, Governor Kotek signed House Bill 4026 in a news article titled Governor, quote, "Governor Timmy Kotek Signs Bill Stopping Vote on North Plains Expansion", end quote. It said that the, the bill clarified urban expansion are not subject to law, to voter approval, and it was made, quote, "retroactive", so it applies to North Plains vote that had been scheduled for the May 21st ballot, end quote. On March 23rd, 2024, in the Oregonian article titled, quote, "Judge Orders North Plains Expansion Vote to Proceed Despite New Law That Tried to Stop It", unquote. It states that a Washington County judge said he will sign a temporary restraining order directing election officials to keep the referendum on the ballot, unquote. Judge, Judge Andrew Irwin ruled that the, the, quote, "expansion opponents have a good chance of prevailing" in a lawsuit filed this week that argues voters have a right to be heard, unquote. On May 21st, 2024, with a voter turnout rate of over 57%, the citizens of North Plains cast their vote, and 71% of the voters said no to the expansion. On September 6th, Washington County Circuit Judge Andrew Irwin issued an opinion striking down House Bill 4026 on constitutional grounds. In an article from Hillsborough, Hillsborough News Times, Irwin stated, quote, "Because the Oregon Constitution first reserved initiative and referendum powers to the people before besting, sorry, remaining powers to the legislature, the legislature has no authority to limit the people's referendum rights." And I continue the quote, "No explanation is given to explain if HB 4026 did nothing to change existing law, why an emergency was declared. The only uncontroversial explanation was that it was declared to derail the North Plains election", unquote. At that point, North Plains City Council could have stopped there and accepted Judge Irwin's ruling. Instead, though, on December 16th, the city council voted to use contingency funds to appeal this rule. In our last city council meeting on February 3rd, however, our mayor and three council members voted to settle. It was the right decision to end a contentious period in our city's history that unfortunately and sadly should never take in the last.
Thank you very much, Lori. Just a heads up, there's only one more person, so if you want to go find your guy.
Well, I can put on my big girl pants and do it myself.
Okay, but I, I'll give you one more person.
Okay.
Katie? Katie Miller, lawsuit opinion.
I'm Katie Miller from North Plains. I just wanted to thank you all for the decision on settling the lawsuit. I know that there's a lot of stink about it online, but honestly, not going through the appeal probably saved the city $100,000 in expenses. And I think cleaning that up and stopping and putting a halt to it was the right thing to do, and I applaud you for that. And I know that a lot of you are getting a lot of critique online or whatnot, but there's a lot of misinformation out there as well. I just wanted to say that none of you are profiting or getting any of the money from the settling of the lawsuit, so I just wanted to make that clear. And I know that people are... And I know that people are. Imagining things or blowing things in proportion to what they aren't, so I just wanted to say that. And um by the way, I know Facebook comments are turned off on the city of North Plains page. Never really been a big fan of that, but you can see where it's useful, but anyway. Maybe someday we can figure something out.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Katie. Or do you feel comfortable?
Of course.
All right, Laura Dexheimer, um for the record, and this is regarding the refrigerator truck and help with nonprofits. Food Bank Center.
So I went ahead because we weren't able to do that through Senator Weber. The funds are pretty limited, but she went ahead and had me, um it was. Said that I should go for a refrigerator truck. We talked about this in the last meeting. And so I have submitted the grant to Senator Weber regarding a refrigerator truck. Bill, did you want to say anything to that or?
No, I mean, I, I, I guess what I would say is, is when I was just kind of looking at it. You know, kind of like called Senator Weber's office and got to speak with the, with her Chief of Staff and her. Cause she was asking about various things going on in North Plains. Um and, and she did, she did mention that um that it sounded to her like. A refrigerator truck very quickly would have high impact for you. And just given the funding environment, it sounded like that not only would be perhaps an easier thing to get through for funding. But it would, you wouldn't have years of planning and capital raising and all that. You'd be able to hit the ground running with, with something extremely meaningful quickly. So I just wanted to affirm, I heard the very same thing. And there's no reason why the city can't, you know, maybe more quickly get behind that. Than kind of the more long, only, you know, the, the more long-term thing that we've talked about before.
Yeah, and that would be fabulous and anything would help. It would be great. A new truck or new refrigerator truck is about a hundred and thirty thousand. A used truck is seventy. I'm already skittering around looking for those. I already have someone pledging ten thousand. So I'm on the way to get it fundraised and then the balance, some of it will come from Senator Weber. So that's where we are with that. And a re- the reason for a refrigerator truck is right now I have a trailer. That I go when I pick up food twice a week. Um in the summertime, it's, it can be concerning. We use ice packs and refrigerator blankets and everything to keep the food cool. But um there's a lot of places where we can't even approach for food because it's required that you have a refrigerator truck, so. We got another denial from the Oregon Food Bank that um we, it might be next year that we're gonna be. So, you know, that's a huge amount that we're not gonna be able to be part of the Oregon Food Bank again, so. Anyway, so that's that. And then last time we talked about um, you know, something with. The Parks and Rec regarding this. I would love if that's gonna be, you know, a group of people. I would love to be part of that since we're a nonprofit and. So I would love to help with that policy change or whatever. So anyway, so that's it. All right, thanks.
That was fantastic. I just have a couple of clarifying questions. Sorry. I'm assuming that you have a marvelous plan already in place, since I'm just asking for a, a yes.
Okay.
That um if you're able to acquire this refrigerated truck, for example, that would be. A vehicle unto itself as opposed to just a trailer and require different licensing and insurance and all the rest of that. And I'm assuming you have a plan for how that's gonna be covered long term?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um and the other clarifying question is. I'm so glad that you were able to receive that commitment for ten thousand dollars in matching funds. Is there an immediate um specific ask from the city for. A particular dollar amount to support that request through Senator Weber, or do you have what you need to move forward? With this initial funding request?
Well, we have the ten thousand and it's been submitted. I don't know if, you know, right now it's in her hands and I don't know if they're gonna come back to me and say, okay, you need. Additional funds, like matching funds. So I'm trying to prepare for that because I assume, you know, that they're gonna, they're gonna ask for that.
If I could suggest, I think based on Bill's comment and Laura's comment, maybe we should add this to a future again, so we don't miss a public comment.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Let's go ahead and do that. Um you get to come visit us again.
Yay, I'm excited. Thank you.
Alrighty, and that was it for public comments, so let's go ahead and move on to staff reports. Ryan, you're up first.
Good evening, councilors. Um, the only thing I have to add to my report is that due to severe weather, we did close the library. Thursday and Friday, but we were open regular hours Saturday. And um we've now caught up with everything. But I'll stand for any questions about my regular staff report.
I appreciate your thorough report as always. I had a general question about the, the old city hall building and the plans for that, which I know includes some library storage and that's very exciting. What other options have you explored or could we potentially discuss in a different format? To allow some, some kind of hybrid use of that either for community programs. Council office space, all sorts of other great uses um for an existing building.
I'd have to defer that question to Bill as a city manager. As of now, it is designated as a library annex for staff. It will have um internet provided by WCCLS.
Okay. Great. Any other questions?
Other questions you, this morning for your, I mean, meeting.
Uh library board, yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and councilors.
It's actually right in front. It looks like you did that.
The one thing I just want to update uh for my staff report was the uh the second point in there about the. ODOT traps enforcement grant. We had a little bit of delay. With that little bit of federal funding hiccup that we weren't quite sure about, but that's, no concerns there moving forward. And then we had some online profile uh requirements for the state um grant. Manager had to build us an online profile to be able to submit our action reports. And so in order to get funding back, we have to be able to say we did something. And so uh we're hoping to get going with the first efforts into January, being in February, that did not happen. But as of this afternoon, our online presence has been updated and we're good to go there, so. Basically, all stops removed and we're posting ahead on that, so hopefully January, I can't, I'm sorry, hopefully into February. And I can't remember what the, the mission will be, but we should have some overtime, traffic efforts.
And we're gonna publicize this too, right?
I'm sorry?
You were gonna publicize this too?
Yes, yes, as we, as, it'll go on Facebook, it'll go on our Facebook page. That's the requirement of the grant is that we basically pushed out via social media that we're doing. Certain enforcement missions.
Okay.
Yeah. Um and then I just want to point out a highlight because I'm not sure we got to talk about it before um with new council. Kind of the way to read those stats, uh in case they're confusing to anybody, that first section. Covers the deputy activities of those deputies, myself, Deputy Shuts, Deputy Barders, they're all signed here to the city in North Plains and what our activity level is. Through all of our working hours uh for the month of January. The second section covers any calls for service in those stats that are specific to the city of North Plains, so anything within the city boundaries. So that's why you'll see some discrepancies in the numbers there. And so like, for example, I'll highlight the public demand calls for service. Myself, Deputy Barders, Deputy Shuts, we handled forty-three of those over the course of January. Where in actuality, we had a total of sixty-one of those calls for service, um public demand calls for service within the city. So basically, we can extrapolate that eighteen of those calls had to be handled by the sheriff's office outside, outside of our normal hours. So with that, I just want to clarify that, so when you're looking at that, it makes sense if you have any questions about that, but I'll take questions.
Um just out of curiosity, who was the outside agency assist?
On the.
The Burke.
The Berkeley, yeah, so that was actually multi-agency. Tiger, you're locally Tiger took lead on that, but it was um that kind of crew. Involved Beaverton Sheriff's Office, Tiger, uh and there's about twelve other agencies that had cases regarding this group of criminals doing. Yeah, it was, it was rather large, and I think the investigation's still ongoing uh to some degree, but they recently Tiger did the press release on it and they. Did took foreign custody in relation to that.
So it wasn't that North Plains folks uh. Going crazy.
No, it was certainly, it was, it was a good collaboration between us locally sharing what we got. You know, that's kind of one of the benefits of being connected to the sheriff's office network of things is those, those property crime cases go to the detectives. And they kind of review that kind of stuff and they can put those pieces together and we build a much larger case. And so um this same crew went down to Central Oregon there shortly after our local incident and did the same kind of rasher burglaries down there. And vehicle evidence that from up here was down there, so that we, they were able to kind of connect that cross jurisdictional really well, so. It was, it was a process of, I want to say like three years of search warrants, multiple uh different jurisdictions, kind of seventeen, so. It's a kind of work. Yeah, it was very, very effective uh police work for sure, yeah.
Um so if I had a citizen hand me a complaint, oh, and so I'm sure that's not the proper way to do it. I'm happy that they felt comfortable to do that, but I guess my question is, how do we go about reporting um noise violations? Or complaints and enforcing them? And how should residents handle a complaint to the city notes to follow up?
Yeah, so right now we don't have like an online portal for specific like ordinance complaints. Uh you're always have, welcome to email me at policechief@northplains.gov. Uh that should be on our website. You can reach me there with those kind of specific code enforcement type complaints. If it's a noise ordinance or noise complaint, non-emergency is the best way to start. Kind of the protocol for that is even if we're not here on duty at the time, you just call the five zero three six two nine zero one one one. Non-emergency number, and that number, they'll create a call, generate a call for North Plains and. Anything a lower priority call, like a noise complaint, unfortunately, when we're not here, is not gonna be serviced. What'll happen is we'll get notified if that call came in overnight and we can follow up with it the next business day that we're in. And then we start to see trends, that's happening, like occurring multiple times in certain places, and we kind of address that kind of individual basis. But organ stuff, I would say email me is a good way to do it. You're welcome to call non-emergency specialists as well. But noise specific, non-emergency is a really good place to start for this. Yeah, and I'm happy to take that.
Chief, if I might, just to bring back up that we discussed that sometime this spring, we would like to have a work session with council. About code enforcement and these things.
Yeah.
So if I know that's undermined, I'd be able to answer it.
Yeah, no, then I think that's good. Uh we are working on some kind of more serious, long-term code enforcement stuff we're dealing with here in the cities and mobility stuff. And so that is absolutely, hopefully it'll come up on the agenda for the March sixteenth work session, talk about some of that code enforcement stuff from our perspective.
Really appreciate it, and I don't want to take our time now, but just to kind of. Give you a preview of something that I'd love to talk with you about in the future. Kind of would really like your perspective on police priorities in any direction that you've been given from city or previous council. As far as um, you know, how your scope of work is organized. And any recommendations that you have for how to optimize that and the resources that we have available. All right, unless anybody else, okay, you're free to go. Um we have Dustin for Public Works.
I do not have a whole lot to report from the last Friday Five that we had after the snowstorm. And the uh agenda item that um I provided for y'all today, so I'm pretty much open for questions.
I'll just say we appreciate having uh the public works guys out because it was, I mean, for Oregon to blow stuff, come on.
I also wanted to echo that, that this is the first time that I have personally seen the snow plows out. And it was frankly very exciting and so helpful. You know, my, my son for the first time got to drive in the snow and gave a cloud streets, so that was a little enigmatic. Thank you for that.
I also just want to say, um I actually saw you out driving uh with another public works complaint. And just the comprehensive um coverage, I saw you at North Avenue, I saw you in Sunset Ridge. Just really appreciative, and I know that that takes a lot of extra time from your already busy schedule, so thank you to you and your crew.
Oh, and congrats to Cody.
Yes, yes, Cody got his C L.
Must have passed our, our annual snowball, so.
Don't jinx us, please. All right, I think we are all set.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve, thank you so much.
I just have a quick update in addition to what's here and what you've received from the Friday Five. If you remember in my last uh update to you, I mentioned something about uh our, we were having some trouble with some signs. One of the signs that we were having some issue with was the sign that's over on the three oh seven um by recology. There's a large billboard style sign there that's advertising a boat and RV rental. Um and it's advertising for the businesses over, over this way, over from West Union. By the new uh City Public Works Building. And we don't allow for those type of signs to be on premise like that. That's essentially a billboard and our code does not allow for that. We reached out to the business to let them know that uh we don't allow those type of signs. And to my shock and surprise, he said, I've been approved for this sign. I was like, really? You got approval for this sign? Any chance you might have a copy of that? So I can see it. Uh well, I was talking on the phone, Rowan jumped into the computer and started going through our sign code approvals. And um I can't remember if it was twenty ten or twenty thirteen, but in both of those folders, there was one letter. One letter was for this sign, and in the other folder, there was one letter for McDonald's. And um the letter did not quote any of the sign code criteria. But it did acknowledge that sign and it did acknowledge the size of the sign and it did acknowledge the sign being located where it is. And so I phoned them back and I said, even though we didn't allow those type of signs in twenty ten or twenty thirteen. And we still do not allow them today. Because you received written approval from a previous administration, we're honored. And so we're gonna allow that sign to remain. Um we won't allow anymore. But that was quite a surprise to see um that letter, because when you start going back beyond twenty fifteen-ish in our records. They kind of fall off. There's not much, and so that was very surprising to find that letter. So I just wanted to let you know that and I'll answer any other questions you may have in regards to the Friday Five updates or this update here.
We're working on digitizing uh our records. How's that going? Because it could probably be easier to search for that. You're doing some work by digitizing all those people that we have. Are we still doing that?
You know, in the time I've been here, I've tried to find all of our records. There are some records still in the archives here and, and our connect box. So I've not been able to dig up uh completely, but um we're really working on trying to get a comprehensive digital record now of everything. Because that's really helping us with our archiving of, of documents. And so uh when I first started in land use planning, um in Bend, actually Districts County. We used to require people to deliver thirteen copies of their land use applications, right? I mean, it was massive, documents like this big, right? Files after files, and we had to house all that stuff somewhere and hold on to it for ten years. It became a nightmare for jurisdictions to figure out how to do this, and so once they allowed us to start digitizing. Stuff and be able to house up in a digital manner, um you sort of, you see some of the paper copies fall off. Um and so presently, what we require right now is one hard copy of all the application materials and one digital copy. And so we're creating one hard copy of everything, um and then everything else is digital. Um and that's really helped us because people aren't coming in the way they used to to look at records. They want to have them sent to them electronically, so they can actually look at them on their time and, and respond on their time. But in the past, what people would do is they would actually call a jurisdiction up to reserve time to come in. And then they would go through the floor and then they would stick everything down on what they wanted copies of. And then we would have to go and copy all that, phone them back and charge them for all that. So I think we're much more efficient than we used to be, um but there's still ways that we can improve.
And thank you for our grant, our best sign-in. However, when they had to replace it with a new one, it was worn down.
If it goes down, it's not gonna back.
Yeah.
And we shared that.
I had notes to myself um regarding a subway sign. Is that? What you meant by the RV one, or were you talking about the old subway location, which is now?
Subway location is in the process of being renovated into a new business. And so uh those folks have been reaching out to us, trying to find out. And so uh those folks have been reaching out to us, trying to find out what the process is, what type of signs are allowed in the zoning district and whatnot. And so we've been helping them um with that. So they, they know what to do.
Are there any updates that are public facing on that process for people who are interested in that property and what's happening?
Um it's our understanding at this time that um that property will be converted to a Starbucks.
Okay, great. Um I also had a note about um public planning commission priority code changes. Do you have any idea just from planning commission priority code changes? Do you have any further description about that? I'm assuming it's something that came up when you're attending their sessions.
I'm not sure.
What you're referencing that wrong?
Yeah, it might have come out of the Friday five. I'm trying to remember where I saw it. And if that's not ringing a bell, we'll figure it out later.
If you want to send me an email, I'm happy to work with you on that and get you an answer, but it's, it's not ringing a bell at the moment, so.
Yeah, it was in some of the documentation extensively that we all reviewed. Thank you.
Yeah, but yeah, if you want to send me the document or, or just let me know what you're looking at, I'm happy to, to help you and get you an answer.
Awesome. Really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
And I do believe three J's on the line as well to help you with any engineering questions you may have. Thank you.
All right.
My turn? Yeah, what's up? Um I, I guess the only thing I would say in addition to um the report that went out in the agenda packet that's worth mentioning. Is something that's kind of emerged in the last few days. Um and this is much of a, a law enforcement issue as it is a finance department issue, but we learned over the weekend. That um somebody defrauded a, a business here in town by impersonating one of our employees with a fake email address. Um and not a small amount of money um in terms of a development. Um that, that business um was. The business was supposed to pay a development fee for, for a development activity in town. Um but in the intervening time of us providing that business with the information about what and how they need to pay. Somebody somehow intervened with a fake email address, posed as one of our employees and got more money out of them than we would have charged the fee. Um so we have law enforcement involved. We, we have reached out to our IT company. They have confirmed that there was no hacking. There was no compromise of anything. It was just a classic phishing um email. Um by somebody um somehow got information about the person and so law enforcement and I, or law, IT is continuing to work with us on any leads on the domain name, all that.
That's pretty sad. Yeah, many crews are really dumb. You know, they had to get the company record and figure it out.
I mean, the, the weird thing is that the email address they use is a really not smart looking fake of the, it's north, north plians. Dot C O M. I mean, just things like that. So what they did is they got two employees' names, one in particular, uh faked that email address really poorly, but the person unfortunately, um yeah.
Did it to, we know what the correct dollar amount that they should have paid to the city was?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we, we, we let, they, they inquired about what the fee should have been. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, absolutely. It's a great question. No, we, um prior to this happening, we were working with that company and we let them know. Um what the fee was going to be. Um so why they, why they paid even more to this other, how it all happened, we're meeting, we'll be meeting with them.
Right. What I'm trying to get an idea of is what's the amount of risk to the city if, for example, we were to say. This was not our error, but we are going to try and help you out and not ask you to pay the fee a second time if you're unable to, you know, cancel the, the bank draft or whatever it was.
No, we'll.
What's the, what's the order of bank if we're talking about?
Um it's, it's several thousand. Yeah, 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 yeah. Um so we'll, we'll meet with them and figure out what the, what the, what the dynamics are there about. It, it's my understanding, it's, it's the expansion of a structure on a, a property. It's not, so the fees that we, we quoted to them. Um that legitimately they were supposed to pay weren't that big. It's just that whoever stepped in and defrauded them were for fees that. A bigger cities charge, like we don't charge nearly that amount. So, but anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna visit with them and unpack what happened. Um and, and get to the bottom of it, but we just learned this over the weekend. So we're just getting information on.
Okay, I, I would hope that um depending on the circumstances and the capacity of this business to absorb. An error like that, that perhaps there are options with plan of plans or something else that we can accommodate them um and let.
Thank you, no. Sorry?
I understand that, uh point of order. I understand the um uh the empathetic and heartfelt gesture in that moment. However, that would be a council decision to do that.
Agreed. And we're looking for options from Bill as he moves forward through this process to let us know as council if he needs support with options like that.
It sounds like you were looking for one option or one type of option. Um you had, I'm sorry, council.
Uh mayor, unfortunately, you're not the first local government who has experienced this sort of fraud. And one other thing I might add to this is contact C I S because they do have cybersecurity insurance that the city may be able to use in this situation. It's a great, this is maybe the third um client that I've been aware of that has suffered something extremely.
So they probably use a scraping to get the, yeah, okay. So this is where else, okay. They probably just scrape the public records, right? They kind of permit and then. Heck of a city that whatever, right? So.
Super. Um anything else on your finance report?
That's it. Just that, so.
Question on, um so Kristen's leaving. Um I'm assuming you're gonna find somebody at some point.
Well, no.
Probably never expected.
Great, no, great question. Um yeah, no, um no, she, she worked for a very long time um at another agency that was not like a, you know, a city. Um and so, you know, I.
Different.
Well, different, exactly. So I think what we're, so probably what I'll end up doing is visiting with Robin, we were going to, the, the finance department needs to kind of be set up. Not self sufficient, but kind of operating on its own. And prior to me becoming city manager, I was finance director. So there was, you know, there was kind of, we operated ourselves. Um we need, we, we don't have to have a full fledged director in charge of the department because when I was there, I was hired to also kind of help with that. Of, help with this and help with that. Um we, but what we do need is somebody who can come in and kind of strictly speaking, you know, manage. Your finance operations and that can be a manager level rather than a director level doing a lot of citywide stuff. So what I'll probably be doing is very soon coming back, we have a city finance manager job description. We're going to be updating that in the next few days while Kristen's still here, because that was the trajectory for her being here. Um we'll come to you. If, if we need to change it significantly, it needs to come before you because that would be a, a job description approval.
Right.
But we'll, but we'll figure it out ASAP with the labor attorney. If that needs to happen or if we can just kind of, you know, modify it for current dollars and that sort of thing. So we'll figure that out. And if it needs to come to you all for approval, we'll do that. And then we'll go to look to fill it ASAP.
And the only reason I ask is because budget keeps coming up. So I just wanted to make sure it's not going to cause any problems.
I am, I am cognizant of budget. Um yeah, you know, I, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yes, um luckily, um we, we did staff up with the um, with the filling of the um, of the uh, the, the. Admin support, April, the admin support assistant position. Um and she's been trying to take over a number of things that, as it turns out now, we'll, we'll let both Bailey and I take on some things instead of me just. There were a few ones where I was strictly speaking that the AP and payable person, in addition to everything. So we won't have to do that. But with budget process in early stage, we really have to fill it with it.
Okay, thanks. I was curious.
Yep.
Anything else? All right.
Thanks.
So that concludes our staff reports. Um item number nine A is resolution twenty two ninety six, adopting the park laws bylaws, park board bylaws. Um I want to thank the Parks Board for their time and effort and apologize that it sounds like clear feedback was not given um last time on what the concerns were with the draft. I'd like to propose that we pause this until our March sixteenth vision session because the output. Um of that will be informative to a holistic evaluation of all boards and committees and their governing documents. So I think we'd be putting the cart before the horse to make a change this close to that session. Do we have discussion?
So I think that they're under a uh, a guideline that they are supposed to have their adopted bylaws in place in order to be operating. And so, you know, we can always make changes to bylaws. We can always make changes to those things, but we're not going to be making the changes to all of our boards and commissions on the sixteenth. You know, retreat, which is supposed to cover all the other things that we're covering. So um, you know, the board looked at those bylaws. Looked at the existing um charter, you know, recognizing issues like. It's called Parks Board in one place and Parks and Recreation Board in another place. Um and recognize there were some bigger changes like that that needed to happen through the ordinances. But I'm not sure why would we hold up the bylaws that sort of lead them in direction of just doing some of the basic work that they're doing at the Parks Board.
I see that from here. That's really like shocking, like we, we need to choose this, you know? It seems to be pretty uh shady.
Uh I think there's a couple of updates that were made that corrected just concerns that were, didn't reflect from the charter. So I think uh to counselor, um Nicole Wallace's point can always be updated later, but I, I believe as I understand, and again, it's my understanding. Since it can be updated later and they need to get it done, I think that we're probably fine to just do this and then. Further guidance can be given at a future date would be my thing.
I, I, can I speak?
Absolutely.
Sorry. Um I do, I was wondering why we could, since we've already had a substantial run rate on, an effort put on these bylaws. Why couldn't we just um add the provision to update the language to change the name within the ordinance as well? At the same time, in one fell swoop, why are we delaying that?
Um because changing the name of the body would require an ordinance to change the code and that requires a basically hearings noted, noticed hearings process.
Okay.
The bylaws that, that are, that have been put before you to consider adopting would be, are by resolution and that's just a simple majority vote in one evening. But changing their name um would be a change to the city code itself and that's an ordinance process. So two different processes, basically.
Can we move?
Yeah.
Or we, no, actually we have, we have publicly noticed, right?
There is also some sections that I had questions on related to vacancies and removal and I was wondering if that language. Um was similar or reflective of other commissions?
Um counselor, in, in terms of when vacancies came up and how they get filled.
Yeah.
Um that language should be about ninety five percent sure that comes right out of the code.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, honestly, the doc, the bylaws in front of you are eighty percent right out of the code.
Okay.
Like, like they, they really own, the only thing, the only things that they've done or added in terms of what, what bylaws are there are just. You know, things like they can have subcommittees that are not on for it and, and, and they can do something about somebody who doesn't show up anymore. They can, they can, they can be rid of that person and, and ask council to appoint somebody new. Um if somebody just gives up interest and doesn't show up anymore and then, um you know, something comes up before them where they need to vote on. Giving the thumbs up on a park design approval. Well, if nobody's showing up, it's the body six, six and you have a split vote. So just avoiding problems. So there's not a lot in the bylaws that are um not in the code. There's only just a bit of addition to it.
So it's reflective. Um there were some questions I saw. Um so for example, um on page one twenty two of the minutes. Um we were talking about repeatedly absent from meetings and um vacancies with regards to vacancies and removal. We didn't really define what that means. But we went to a lot of extent in other areas of our code. So there are some variances that I had and small nuances that I caught. Um when I was looking at subcommittees, we referred to um pro turn, pro turn, but I think the intent was pro ten. So it's a minor error that I caught while reading. Um.
So my, my main concern was just making sure when we are looking at the vacancies and removal, it's a holistic approach as well too. So I can itemize the, the, the errors that I caught when I was reading. So you guys can have that for future consideration.
So how would you suggest we accommodate the revisions that councillor Hagerdorn has identified? Um which sound like they're mostly um typos and matching to code?
Well, there was some that we needed to define what repeatedly absent from meetings means to, right?
So sorry to interrupt you. Maybe would it make sense to provide those and ask for a revised draft? At our next council meeting to adopt formally at that point?
Sure, I'll be more than happy to send an email to Bill with all of the itemized concerns caught.
Is that acceptable to the group?
Just a, a point of clarification, then with the proposed revisions, would that have an opportunity to go back to the Parks Board to review before coming back to council to adopt?
Great question. That is a great question.
Well, any, any, any recommendations for revisions that you send to me would go to the Parks Board, Parks and Record. Depending on the day. Um and yeah, they would take those up and, and go through the process of, of them voting to approve, you know, the changes as, as recommended. And then yes, so that would be at their March meeting. And then they would, that would come back to you at the very next city council meeting.
Adding to chancellor Payton's point, if it's adopted as is though, I mean, since they're reasonably minor, in my opinion, just my. Um they could always adjust those at a future date, or would that need to go back to the resolution? So I understand.
Um they, I mean, they, they can always be updated at a later, you know, at a later date. I mean, I mean, um I might be incorrect, but you, you. If what, if what you wanted to do was up, move and vote to approve, but with these edits. I mean, can they, can they not suggest edits, a vote contingent upon recommended edits?
Absolutely. So it'd be delegation of authority to a member of the council to work with city staff to update the vote, but that would be delegating, I'm sorry, update the resolution. That would be delegating the authority to that person. So it wouldn't come back to council for final approval.
Yeah, I was gonna say we could, we could um uh make a motion to accept it uh with the changes noted. Um so that takes care of all those typos. Just kind of noting them out loud here at the moment. Um and if there's a question about, you know, sort of like. It's too vague on how many absence, there needs to be a defined number. Uh can we add in and say no more than three absence? Can we add that in right now? Or would that be something that we would just simply accept at this point and then note that we need to change that? Uh it sounded like mayor, if I'm correct, it sounded like you wanted the time when we're going to go through all of our. Boards and commissions to look at the details on them. Um you know, at, at some point and that could fall into that realm as well as after.
Okay. I actually really appreciate the process that you outlined where we can delegate authority. That seems like it sounds the most palatable to council and that we have. Um someone who spent a lot of time reading through it and could maybe take that work forward. Do we want to go ahead and discuss further or do we feel like we're ready for a motion?
Yeah, I mean, there's, I'm sorry, there's a variety of ways that you can handle it. I mean, my understanding is that the charter, I'm sorry, your city code requires that you have bylaws for this committee. And that we have been not in compliance with that provision of the municipal code for quite some time now. So one way to handle this is just to adopt the council, I'm sorry, the rules as amended, take care of the typos, non substantive items. And then if you'd like the Parks and Record to be involved in some of those more substantive issues, defining what it means to be absent, how many absences are, obstances are excessive. You send just that item back to the, um to the Parks and Record and get their input on that. You can also delegate authority or you can make that decision as a city council.
Not sure how we can weigh in on multiple options.
I, I, I obviously, I, I like the option of making a motion to approve the bylaws with. Mandy's noted typos and, sorry, counselor, Hagerdorn's noted typos. And that we then send the question back to the Parks Board to bring us back that information or additional change at another time.
Second.
All right. Shall we vote? Move, move in second.
Any council discussion on the motion?
Do we want to talk about it more?
No.
I think it's fine.
That's good.
Fair enough. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, well done. Let's move on. Let's move on to twenty-two ninety-seven, creating a library supervisor position. Yeah.
So, and I've read this fifteen times and I think I understand it finally, but I misread it and it was my fault.
Oh.
I think this means you're promoting somebody, right? Is that how I read this?
Um, no, this is a new position that I would recruit for. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, it's my fault. I was just trying to understand. So what it says, deleting one and adding one, is that what I read?
Oh, we have an F-one FTE vacancy right now that is a library assistant two position. And what I'm proposing is to, um, replace that with a library supervisor position. So this is a new position, which is why it's in a resolution for you this evening. Um, I, um, what this position will accomplish is it will fill the immediate need for a volunteer coordinator that we've had vacant, um, except for the briefly since Carol Aldrich retired at the end of last May. And, um, it is a step towards preparing for upcoming workflow changes that are coming. The WCCLS Funding and Governance Project, um, as well as some new software that our frontline staff will be needing to learn soon. So this position will add capacity for myself. I'm currently the only supervisor for the library department. We have six part-time employees and four FTE of full-time employees. And this will add capacity to my position to reorganize our workloads and take on new responsibilities as a department.
So we're gonna, you have a gentleman for a part-time employee, you want to step that out with a full-time supervisor, is that?
This is a full-time, one FTE library assistant two position.
Right.
That I am proposing to remove and replace with a library supervisor position that would do both volunteer coordination and our, um, circulation desk schedule, as well as date the day-to-day supervision in the library.
What's the difference in cost between your library assistant two and the supervisor role?
Uh, I, I include it. It is covered in my current budget and I would have to pull that up to get you an exact number.
Even just ballpark?
Um.
Number of zeros.
I would say twenty-five thirty to thirty thousand dollars a year.
With this, what budget would this have?
This is in the library personnel budget, which has a, a salary section and an hourly section. And so, um, the general move is to create more full-time benefited positions and, um, move away from as many part-time hours. So when we start our budget work, this will be a great time to look at the library staff and holistically, you know, for the next budget cycle, but as far as this budget cycle, we have it within our budget to, to, uh, add this position.
So this doesn't have any cost in fact, was?
It does not.
In your budget?
Correct.
And you are requesting a approval of a position, um, since it's a new position?
Correct, and it was, uh, reviewed by the city attorney and approved, not description.
I'm prepared to make, is make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution twenty-two ninety-seven to create a library supervisor position and a move a library assistant position purely vacant.
I'll second. Any discussion? I do have some concerns at this stage of the budget process, given the bare bones information that this council has received so far about what we're looking at in the next biennium. And I, I'm not sure that any of us can predict at this point what that budget is going to look like and retaining staff and making changes like this at this point in time. Is there, is there any harm in us waiting a little longer until budgets are established?
Uh, yes, this is an urgent need to fill, to have a volunteer coordinator in place and fill this position before summer reading starts. So this is a, a time sensitive issue, yes.
Okay, and is there a plan in place in case the budget is different and does not support this moving forward for some reason?
Um, I'm prepared to cover the cost, the difference in cost with my current budget allocation.
Okay.
Uh, if it was to be reduced substantially by the budget committee, that would be a very different conversation in a lot of ways. But this is, um, this is a managerial decision to, for what our biggest need is now with the vacancy.
Great. Thank you. Do we feel ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, and to item nine C, Resolution twenty-two ninety-eight regarding the, um, transportation grant. And we talked about this quite a bit in our work session earlier, do we feel like we'd like some more discussion now?
I would just like to note in the, um, in the grant application, I know there's some conversation about like, you know, how are we going to stay connected to comprehensive plans or future visioning or those sorts of things? Uh, and I saw in the, in the staff report for this item that, um, you got the quote that it would, the idea of this is to really help the code and update the code so that we are working towards providing quality housing for all ages and income level, a well-planned and connected city, pedestrians and bicycle pathways between neighborhoods in a vibrant, walkable, attractive place. Now, we don't have specific goals or vision for this twenty-twenty-five council in place at this moment. I don't think it should slow us down from operations. Um, I do think that that's a pretty broad sense of trying to do good with our code that is going to align with what we want to do, may not be specifics. Um, as we talked about in work session, um, there will be opportunities to direct and drive and sort of create the path that this takes. So I have no problem with moving forward to make a motion to accept, um, this, moving this application forward.
My second. Well, is there any further need for discussion from council?
Yeah, I don't know. I keep coming back to what Counselor Page said about what is the, like, what is this going to drive? Is it going to drive some density or other things that we don't want currently in the city? And I think that's a, I don't know, that's just, I, I don't really have a good answer. It's just got me thinking about it now. I came in here with one opinion after attending planning commission. And now I'm, got everything.
I, I guess what I would just emphasize in terms of that question is about certainly valid concern. I mean, that, that's a big thing in North Plains, of course, is density and what density levels. Um, but as, as Roland mentioned in the work session, that's, that's really kind of the reason why there's so much public outreach, to really gauge how people feel about this much density more or this much more. And how can development codes support those things or not support or not encourage some things, but encourage other, you know, that sort of thing. So I guess what I would say is, is the process heavily tries to gauge all that from the public. Um, and help you all feel better about what the end result is of the recommendations based on, you know, what was heard. Um, so I guess that's, that would, that would be an input I have into, into your question.
Yeah, and just a second, um, wanting to hear what you have to say too. But I've heard from two counselors so far who've expressed a similar concern. And I wonder if as part of the process moving forward, if we could address that specifically in the ongoing updates and make sure that those touch points are continuing to reassure, um, that we are headed in the right direction.
Absolutely. I also want to add, counselors, the, um, the updates and the methodology and the way that we plan now versus the way that is, um, reflected in our current CDC. Yes, we see a lot of increases in density and, and different techniques that the state uses in the name of increasing housing affordability and availability. But we also see in other code assistance projects, um, regulations and standards that preserve neighborhood character, um, that are focused on creating livable density and working with existing neighborhood character to preserve that way of life. Um, ways that we can introduce, um, modern ideas without it being incompatible with our current system. Um, and that's a big focus of the TGM program. Um, that was one of the, the major founding reasons to be able to work with a, a department like ODOT that is bringing forward transit and new transportation facilities and, and make the, uh, able, make us able to work with planning and have that be compatible. And, and this is an extension of that, I think. But we will be able to absolutely provide more touch points. Um, and as I mentioned, Planning Commission and ultimately City Council have the final say on these updates.
Just getting back to.
Um, I think overall, Rowan and Steve both did a really fantastic job with the presentation and, and outlining that. My, my initial reaction was, yes, that makes perfect sense. Um, I think just, you know, also weighing the other side of the equation of, my question would be, what's, what's in it for ODOT and DLCD? Like, why are they implementing these type of programs? Um, can you share a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I can't speak, uh, as well as the TGM staff or, uh, DLCD staff could. But I can share with you a bit about, uh, the reason why the state funds these things. And it stems a lot from small communities being these great havens for Oregonians. Um, Oregonians have been primarily rural, we don't have a ton of major metros and we have a lot of small cities. Um, I don't remember what the exact stat statistic is, but the vast majority of Oregon's cities are small communities with very limited planning capacity. And so the state has seen this as a priority to reach a lot of Oregonians and to provide them with the assistance needed to create cities that are livable, that meet the goals stated in, in the plans that often get, uh, drafted and adopted. And then small jurisdictions have trouble actualizing those lofty goals. So the state's trying to really fill a hole here and give those jurisdictions that have plans the opportunity to make that leap from goal to actuality.
And then I think just a couple of follow-up questions. Um, you know, what is, what's the risk if we move forward? Are there any other risks that we haven't discussed if we move forward with this?
Um, the only risk I would say that we have is that the project, um, isn't selected, which is extremely minimal risk based on our conversations with TGM staff. They've seen our proposal, they have, they know how recent our comprehensive plan and other plans are. Most of those plans are from twenty nineteen, some updated in twenty twenty-two. That's incredibly recent in the planning world. Um, so they were thrilled to see that recency. Um, they are excited by the location of North Plains and we already have collaborative relationship with TGM. So the risk of this project not going forward, I think is minimal. Um, and, and that would just be, uh, an unfortunate situation. Um, other than that, this project places most of the financial burden, um, on TGM and on the, the state process. Um, we're responsible, of course, for some of the public engagement and the staff time that we use during the process. If the project went forward and ultimately there was not a decision to adopt a code in the end, that would be, um, a risk to our city resources. It would have used a, a lot of staff time and public facilities and community residents' time, um, to have a, a project that didn't go forward. But I think, um, as we have talked to our planning commissioners, we've talked to this body, um, you all respect the time of staff and of residents. And, um, from what we have seen in the past, uh, the city likes to get things done. So I would say I'm not incredibly worried about this being dropped at the last minute as well. Those, those are my two, uh, pinch points and both of them I would raise minimal.
And just to maybe add a clarifying question there, you had mentioned that if we got all the way to the finish line and then did not adopt this, that would, that would be tragic. Um, I would assume that that is not a yes or no answer in its entirety either. That if there were somehow getting through all of these gates, some bit of problematic code, that the council could say everything but that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So yeah, my concern is that, um, the way you are, way you strike me and the way I see it is Oregon wants to, um, have public density, they're really pushing for that. And try to get in public transportation, like, hey, you guys don't need drivers, we have buses, what are you guys talking about, right? It's great. That's why I think it's, small communities are not, I doubt of that. So they're saying, hey, guys, tell you what, we'll do it for you, you guys don't have to worry about hiring your own, um, folks to help make, uh, these, these code adjustments, we'll do it for you. And our code adjustment is going to be to have us become part of Metro. And I'm thinking that is the hook that's in it. And then I say that explicitly, but a lot of the, their first thing they're going off to is they're saying we want to have a adjustmentation, and they say that early and often. And then they want the, uh, selected officials to be behind it ahead of time before they, uh, sign up on it. So I can, I see how it's protecting them from wasting their assets by having that, it was like, oh, this is such a guy and we'll say no, right? They wanted to have such kind of commitment. I'm just worried that, uh, this is going to be just a gateway code, right? So.
So, one second. Bill and perhaps Ashley, do you have any concerns with the way that the resolution is written and obligating council to any of these, um, outputs being adopted to address Counselor Page's concern?
I would look at it, I did not, but I looked at it. I'll look at it through those, that lens, which is one giving a second.
I very much appreciate you. Back to Michelle.
Thank you, I'm Counselor Page. I, I hear the concerns and, um, I also live on the other side of saying, hey, we're, we're a really small area and a small town with really outdated code. And how do we manage to get that done? In a sense, how do we do that in a way that makes sense and that we can afford to do? Um, it's not going to take twenty years of, you know, trying to get through things a week. Um, so it doesn't say that in the information, it doesn't say that, is that true? Doesn't say the same, but I think the bottom line to remember is it comes down to council approval. Whether it leads you in that direction, if we get led down the path halfway and go, hey, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel here, that's not where we're going to go, we can stop that, you know? Or we can say, hey, you know, we want to redirect that. Or we could say, we're not going to play at all anymore, now we're done. So we, we, we have to remember that that is the power of policymaking for this body. And that is what our role is to do. Uh, so I don't think, sort of working with the state through their funding to help small communities is, um, and we should just turn all of that away. I think we have to recognize how to use it best to serve us in more importance.
However, we're also not on the time to, and we're going into a work session, right?
I think, um, and I wanted to defer to you if you would prefer to clarify instead. But I think the timeline was based on the, um, budget cycle, if you will, for this grant and making sure that North Plains was first in line and most likely to receive funding.
Yeah, so, um, this, since it is a open application and we're approaching the end of the, um, biennium, uh, budget, uh, we actually first approached TGM about this back in October. And we're advised to wait a little bit because of that ODOT procurement process, it's about six months. If we apply in this timeframe, spring of twenty-five, we will be the first or one of the first to be in that fresh, freshly replenished funding bucket. Um, which means that, uh, there's, there's going to be less likely that someone's going to say, whoa, that's out of scope. Um, we're more likely to have a, a comprehensive project and, and really be cream of the crop in that way.
Next.
I can just add a couple of comments to this to help people, I kind of, there's a lot of you that were near the beginning, right? When this conversation took place. And so you have to understand that, you know, this whole thing was kind of part of a bigger package, right? There was a UGB expansion that was being considered. There was a new code that was believed that should come along with that project so that things were more coordinated, right? Right now, we don't know where the UGB is going. So that things were more coordinated, right? Right now, we don't know where the UGB is going. Um, and if we do a code update, all the land pretty much is built right now. So you're only talking about somebody who would want to come in and do redevelopment on a lot, that the new code could potentially impact, right? So if you're looking at the code update, you should be thinking about info development right now, you know? And so are we going to update our five, our seven point five, our two point five to change that a little bit, right? To add density, to reduce density, to add no housing, take little housing out, you know, those are the kind of, are we gonna add a new zoning district? To the code, right, to accommodate some type of development in the future? Um, are we going, a lot of this came about as a result of the neighborhood community zone. Uh, that's a very broad zoning district that is really more of a planned unit development zoning district than really a residential zoning district. Cause it, it's so complex that you don't generally see a residential zoning district that also allows for commercial uses within it. So this is a very unique type of a zoning district and these, this is the zoning district that was used for the two last UGB expansions that came into the city. Sunset Ridge is own neighborhood community, Brenhill is own neighborhood community. They're different than any other zone in the city right now that we have in terms of the uses, the way it gets developed, the master plan requirements, all that. There's been people saying, I don't really like that right now, right? I want some tweaks to that. And there are some problems with that code as a matter of fact. You know, when we were going through the affordable housing project, folks were wishing on the planning commission that there was some more clarity on the percentage of mixed use that would be required for a project. Um, that's not in our code right now. That could be something that could come through this code update. We could bring more clarity into that. Um, again, there's references in the code right now that are not accurate on who is doing what. Um, we don't want the public works director doing the sign code. He doesn't need to do that. We have a planning department now. We don't want the public works director doing the flood plan. We have a person for that now. We don't want the city recorder doing various aspects of the planning code. We have a person for that. If you go back and look at the signs that I talked about that were approved back in twenty ten and twenty thirteen, they were approved by the city reporter. It doesn't look like that person had a lot of background in land use planning or an understanding of the sign code, which is why we have a billboard. Where we don't want a billboard, right? Uh, so there's a lot of good that can come from this. And without the city growing right now, we're not impacting a whole lot. You gotta look at this update is where we're going in the future. And if you're not changing the zoning districts on any of the existing land uses that we have in the city right now, chances are this probably isn't gonna impact it too much, right? So if you have our seven point five land right now, that would be one section we would look at changing. We wanna add no housing to that code. It's a conditional use. That could potentially change the neighborhood, right? Because now you can get a duplex or a triplex into a neighborhood that does not have any of that right now. That would be up to you folks to make that decision on if we wanna go that direction. Maybe we wanna increase the density in our two point five zones, so we can get a little bit denser in those areas of the city that we're identifying for uh mo- uh multiple, multifamily housing, excuse me. Um, those would be the things that you guys would be looking at. And so when you, when we talk about the code update, we're talking about looking at the residential zones, looking at the commercial zoning districts, looking at the subdivision ordinance, looking at the design review ordinance, and making sure that those codes are good and that they have accurate criteria for what we want them to be reviewed against. And right now, we don't have all fair and objective standards for our subdivisions. We don't have fair and objective criteria for our design review, um, which puts us in conflict with some state law. We're not saying that everything's gonna go up in vertical. That would be your choices, right? We might come forward with a proposal that says you may want to consider it. Um, we think there's some benefit to it, but you're the ultimate decision makers on this. The planning commission may come forward and say, yeah, we like that idea. We think we should treat something here. We should treat something there. You folks may say, I disagree with that. I wanna change that back a different direction. So again, you folks are the ultimate decision maker on this. And another potential consequence of getting all the way through this and not adopting something is we would probably not be looked too favorably by DLCD and TGM for future grants, right? So if you wanna do it, I encourage you to do it. It is needed. Um, but I wouldn't sit there in fear of the unknown. You guys control much of it. Um, and so as long as you are engaging your community, asking questions, let them provide you comments back on what they feel is necessary. And then you make the adjustments to the code to address those concerns. You guys have that authority, right? You're the final say of what is approved.
It's called Transportation and Growth Management Program.
It is, it is.
It's like, ooh, what does that mean?
It is. It's trying to plan a better community so that we're not making unnecessary trips when we don't have to, right? It's trying to make it more walkable, get people from the residential areas into where our business areas are, where our commercial areas are. With not having to walk through traffic to get there, try and have it mitigated a little bit, right? It's trying to get it downtown that achieves the goals and objectives that you guys would like to see. We're not getting people into the city right now, developing the downtown, because apparently it's not attractive enough to the entrepreneurs of the world to come in and do that. Maybe we could put a few mechanisms into our code that might trigger that. That somebody might say, oh, now that I can go four stories or maybe that I don't have to provide parking or I can do something else. Now I'm interested in buying this little lot over here in downtown North Plains cause I can get away with what I wanna do now. Um, again, all your decisions to make, just counsel.
So um, I, I, I fear that this conversation is moving into these sort of bigger questions about the code and what should we do with code. And if, when the actual question and the motion on the table is to um put an application forward for this grant. I think all of those discussions will be part of that process and should be, you know? But what this application is, is to look at updating our existing code and potentially changing code, putting things in the code, place for the future, et cetera. But it's also look at all the old stuff too. Um, and there is a, a motion on the table and a second, so I would like to call the question and go for the vote.
Yeah, there's absolutely nothing obligatory or contractual in the resolution. The resolution is just to, as Counselor McCall Wallace said, to support the application.
Okay. Was everyone all the way down the table able to hear, Ashley, that there are no legal concerns? Okay, then let's go ahead and have the vote. Unless we need more discussion. All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Did you capture that or do you need us?
Counselor Redding?
Aye.
Counselor McCall?
Aye.
Counselor Page?
Aye.
Counselor Haggard?
Nay.
Counselor Paven?
Aye.
Counselor Dumbrow?
Aye.
Mayor Goodwin?
Aye.
Uh, all three motions passes.
I was just gonna say the same thing. Absolutely. Let's go ahead and take a five minute break. Everyone's been sitting here for a while. We'll be back.
All right, let's get back to it.
Thank you, folks. Next item of business, we have 10A, which is reviewing the Jesse Mays nonprofit fee waiver criteria, which is direction we're going to provide to Parks and Rec. But before we get started on that, Patty, let's go ahead and she's not. That's all right. We will address her question about the senior center's request for fee waiver. We want to have some council discussion on that item, or perhaps Bill, can we get some background information on which entities have been charged in the past and which haven't? Because it sounded like this is the first time Patty's been asked to pay a fee.
Yeah, so I so the answer is to that question is I don't have the full history of who does or who doesn't get discounts. It's been not well, that's not really. I mean, that's the nice thing about the conversation you're having this evening is is, you know, having an advisory board come back to you with with some criteria specifically. The practice in the past has focused on different fee waivers. You know, if there's generally speaking, something that's meant to be, you know, broad public service. For instance, hey, let's say a let's say a club comes along and says, we our Lego club is a nonprofit and we want to use Jesse Mays for a for an event. That nonprofit would probably not get council's approval for a waiver because it's a club. It's kind of a narrow population and yada, yada, yada. But if Washington County search and rescue came and said, we'd like to have a fundraising dinner, then well, that's a public good. That that's a group that's fundraising to kind of be good for the broader community or what have you. So it's 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 been for city council in the past. It's kind of been just a subjective thing, primarily focused on something government related or something that happens to be kind of like a local entity that serves the community. So the senior center has been in the past, something that hasn't been charged for, say, a fee at Jesse Mays for those reasons. But now with the community growing, you have a new kind of a new reformed food bank and you have a new director of that food bank. And you're going to have probably other nonprofits come along and say, it could be get a waiver. So it it's been a subjective thing. And and I think it's great that you're taking up kind of getting some formal policy or policy recommendation.
Great. And the crab feed that Patty mentioned is quite close in the future. So I would imagine that they are already on the schedule for Jesse Mays and they've already booked the facility ostensibly without any of the fees being charged. So it kind of has already happened.
Yeah, they're they're basically just requesting it's a fundraiser for the senior center. And so they're basically just they needed to get it on the books a while back, just so that the event was secured. But they just, you know, kind of wanted to sound like to me, pretty sure, just wanted to request a fee waiver kind of consistently with the past. But, you know, but again, it's one of those things where it's a subjective decision before you all unless you kind of have a.
And this just takes a consensus of the council to to do that, correct? It's not a motion, but remember.
To direct the Parks and Rec Board? Oh, yeah, consensus. Yeah, exactly. Nobody really, nobody objects.
I am a little curious, maybe a conversation for a different time, how they ended up booking the facility and charged what we're just having this conversation now. But I think we're we're improving the process and we'll move forward with that.
They may have been charged and maybe they're coming in now.
It's a retro, retro, yeah, yeah, that's it. Yeah, they, you know, they're they're doing the deposits. Yeah, it's just kind of more of a retroactive. Do we not have to pay sort of?
Kind of a real firm schedule, like maybe they pay the deposit and deposits refundable or something, you know, it's not on those sides. So.
Do we feel the need for further discussion?
No, I think even, oh, sorry. I just was wondering, isn't it $31 for a nonprofit to rent it? It's $52 an hour for nonprofit.
So, yeah, so nonprofits for the first two hours of running Jesse Mays, it's $52. So it's actually $26 per hour for the first two hours. And then every hour, third hour, fourth hour plus is 52 per hour after that.
And this is Bailey did the research in comparing some other local venues, correct? The way cities do it.
Yeah, a couple of so back in 2023, when we established Jesse Mays is as kind of its own fund, the better track its revenues versus expenses. We did update the fee structure based on research of other facilities and identified that we have a kitchen that doesn't work quite as well as other places that we've been over that. So I don't mean to go into the weeds on that. So so after hearing our recommendations based on other cities, council set usage fees here to be a discount to elsewhere. So so one thing we don't have, we don't say that should be said is that by a nonprofit renting here, they're getting a discount even compared to the nonprofit rate in other cities, because we just Jesse made is a nice facility, but it's not as nice as what others, most other cities offer. So this is the lower cost option. If even if you charge the full nonprofit rate. So that's something to keep in mind.
And do we know if other cities say waive nonprofit fees?
They they can, yeah.
I think I talked about this last time. Well, what is that? This seems like part of the next, the actual agenda item question. And the question we have is, should we waive the fees for the senior centers? We missed that, doing that during the public comment. And I I just want to say, since we just recently waived fees for another nonprofit that operates out of the senior center, that, you know, it seems like at this moment in time, we should waive it for this particular use for this particular event. And and then I do have, I can give you the examples with the other, but that's part of the other, that's part of the agenda, which we're not actually doing yet.
Right.
I think that's my discussion on the background as we discuss this one.
So I think that feels like the appropriate amount of discussion for, as Michelle said, this particular organization for one event, which is really the only decision that we're making right now, is for the North Plains Senior Center request for the crab feed, not the North Plains Senior Center overall, not the overall process for nonprofits. So do we feel ready to make a vote on that?
And I think they're pretty light left. We all want to support it. So.
Okay, we have consensus. And I'm assuming that you'll communicate back with Patty and we'll take care of that from there. Okay. Returning to the actual agenda item, let's discuss the process. I'm curious. And Bill, refresh my memory if we have already discussed this, my apologies. What are the actual hard costs that are assumed by the city when an organization like a nonprofit might rent the facility? Are we on the hook for sending staff over here to open up the door? Are we clearing the trash? Are we assuming some kind of liability insurance on their behalf because we're not charging them? Can you explain that to us?
So every renter, no matter who they are, has to provide us proof of insurance for the event. Very frequently, if that's a resident or a household, that's it's basically an extension provision of their of their homeowner's insurance. But everybody who whoever rents this facility has to demonstrate adequate insurance from our perspective. Everybody has to put down the $520 non-refundable deposit.
Non-refundable?
Not, excuse me, refundable. Thank you. Just to give her clarifying. So does anybody think, nobody thinks we're keeping the $520 outright? And everybody has to pay the refundable deposit unless you all waive it for whatever reason. But in that particular case, we'd not recommend it because floors get gouged, things get damaged, it just happens. And that's what that covers. From there, what it boils down to is staff involvement with different rentals, for the most part, is pretty minimal. We check people in, we make sure we make sure they're in successfully. We set up for them depending on if they request setup assistance. There's a small fee for that. But typically, we show up, we show them, we walk through, show them how everything is used that needs to be used, if they need to use a sound system, what have you. We give them instruction on everything that needs to be, how cleanup needs to happen. They're responsible for sufficient cleanup. We will take money out of the deposit if there that there's just a mess. We've had instances where people will have a big event with food and garbage cans that there's their responsibility is to empty the trash. They don't. Dishes, disposable dishes and food splatter everywhere on the walls and that sort of, I mean, it happens. So but for the most part, staff involvement is pretty minimal. Then then there's the checkout, staff shows up for that, make sure everything, we'll go to walkthrough and and that's the end of it. So we try not to throw too much staff time at it. It really kind of boils down, are they extending rates? But take more staff time because of the effort.
I understand. Just clarifying, you mentioned that the trash removal is the renters responsibility. Where do they?
They have to take, they have to, they have to dispose of that in a.
Offsite.
Yep, offsite. Yeah, we don't clean, we don't clean them up, clean up after them. If we have to, then that comes out of the deposit.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I asked for this to be on the agenda so that we could, because it was brought up a couple of times in the last meeting, discussion, with the idea of seeking consensus to provide direction to the Parks advice or the Parks Advisory Board to give us a set of guidelines or bigger recommendations for guidelines or advice in terms of criteria for fee reduced or fee free, free rentals for events. And and I mentioned also before that I had done a facility, I worked at the facility as the cultural arts manager of the Philbrook where it's the Walter's Cultural Arts Center, for those who know that facility of the Parks Recreation. And the way that that works is that if the criteria was set up as an advisory criteria, so that you could say, oh, you know, is this a nonprofit? Is this a nonprofit in the city of Philbrook? Is this a, you know, who's being served by this? Is it available to the public? So my thought was that we could ask the Parks Board to create a list for us as counselors so that we could say, this is what we want on our criteria. So so it doesn't matter if you know someone or don't know someone and you're going forward to ask. But then we had one where it was clearly that person knew, counselor, basically, easy to approach kind of thing. So, you know, it can include things like, is it a North Plains nonprofit or not, you know, or is it a nonprofit at all? Is it, who's being served? Does, you know, what's the length of the rental? Is this a three day rental or is this an afternoon? Is it open to the public? This is a public good. Does it meet the visions and goals we've outlined at the council? You know, is it somehow helping us forward our mission? And, you know, what's the number of times per year that an organization can have that? You know, I had organizations that were requesting, you know, six to eight times a year, you know, it's not a requesting once, but you can't, it can't always be available. So it was sort of how do you figure that out? So the idea was could we as a council have the consensus to directly forward as an advisory board to us to create that set of guidelines and advisory information and bring that back?
I I think, as well, the only thing I would add is I like what Bill said about broad, broad public service or something of that effect be added in as one of the criteria, because I think what I like about the senior center and the North Plains Food Bank is I feel like those are places that serve our community, exactly our community. And I like that idea. So that would be my only addition would be add that.
And I would, I would hesitate for us to make the list, how including the advisory board. I think they're going to have some other ideas. You know, or they might have a concern about one that we tossed around this year as an example. So, you know, I welcome what they bring back and for us to have the discussion then when we see that. Yeah, like a special club that has enough hung up with their six folks, you know.
Yeah, I think those are are great considerations. And I can tell that you have you have run a system like this and have encountered things like, yes, someone wants to do it every month and they want it for free. I think I would love to see the Parks Board work with staff on process and documenting that process, not merely the criteria, but fully, you know, encompassing, someone calls City Hall and they say, I want to rent Jesse Mays. What happens? And, you know, if we're going to eventually compile a list of those organizations that are pre-approved based on these criteria that we've provided, which then could provide staff with guidance on how to handle those. I also wanted to be a little sensitive to that $520 refundable deposit and ask that part of that process be to define the the criteria for when that would be held versus returned and the time period until that that money is returned.
So respectfully, this is a a mode or a agenda item to say, hey, can we get some guidelines and advisory information about that? Sort of making sure we revise all of our thing, which is also a great work project for the advisory group to sort of look at the whole process and make sure it's outlined and described well to the community. But I'd love to see those guidelines come back to us because we're getting those questions now and we don't have them. But that would be a great thing to work with the Parks Board on as a project for them to move forward with.
How do you envision that coming to fruition? Would it be a work session to discuss this or some of these ideas that obviously we want them to come up with the specifics, but as much guidance as we can give them upfront helps them be successful?
Well, I think that we also have to trust that they're professionals and we have seven of them on an advisory group that joined that particular group because that's where their interest is. And that, you know, we basically say, hey, you know, we're seeing that this is kind of messy. We'd love to see the, we'd love to make sure that the guidelines are, that we have some guidelines for us for free rentals. That's one thing. But then we also have information to make events rentals more understandable by the community. So they understand what they need to do. They understand what deposits cover or don't cover, or just the whole process to make it user friendly. So that we get more people in the door renting. So I don't know that we need to sort of put through the work in front of it and say, now put it into a document. I think that we should trust them to do the work.
So do we feel like there is more discussion needed on this? Do we have some additional plans? Okay, then Roland, I very much appreciate all the the great notes that you're taking here. Whether it ends up in the minutes or whether we provide parks with, hey, look at YouTube at this rough time, I would love them to be able to see the conversation that we've had and for whatever use it is, as they continue to develop the criteria and pitch back.
And so we have a city manager who will carry that information for us as well to that.
All right. So do we feel like there's a motion we want to make? Okay. Everybody capable?
Yeah.
Um, at that point, then, we've got 10B and I think this is a new item. I need some clarity on what we were hoping to accomplish. That's the City Council Planning Commission joint work session.
Well, I think that there was, there was an answer to just kind of give an update on what the what the, what the joint work, excuse me, with the joint work session would look like currently scheduled for March, I believe, 17. Excuse me, March 3rd, March 3rd, my apologies. And the update is just basically that the, at this point, the the rack and the consultant have basically set up that they would like to come to you and the planning commission jointly. And what they're, what they're filling in the blanks on is the first 30 minutes of the of the meeting, probably 15 to 20 would just kind of be the overview and summary of process and then and then what the, what the, what the committee identified should be brought to city council for consideration and why. And then a part of that for 30 minutes, there would be, there would be at least three different committee members from different kind of perspectives to come and just talk to you about what they thought of the process and and, you know, why, why they end up deciding to recommend what they did. And then the other 30 minutes was was basically just going to be Q and A time with with you all and planning commission members. That's the framework. And so that's being elaborated upon as we speak. Rack members, the committee members will will be there, three or more, not many more, would be there to at the table to kind of be part of the conversation. But the other rack members have been asked if we should, because it's a big meeting. So but it's really meant to try to get information to you and then leave as much information, as much time as possible for time for questions.
I think it's just something move the agenda, right?
That sounds, that sounds reasonable. Just to clarify, it sounds like this is really an inform and there are no actions that would be an output of that work session. Nothing moving the UGB process as a whole forward. It's merely providing the data and the context that they've worked so hard on.
Yeah, exactly. Informational and then answer any questions and clarify or come back to you with any more info. It's info, information.
I was, I don't know if there's much time in that work session for this, but if we, I was thinking it'd be fun if we got the real committee's input and then now that second half, it's us and planning commission, if we could work on maps together and and kind of come up with, you know, this body's vision on the maps, or is that just totally out of luck?
Some of us already went to that meeting.
Well, no, it's a good question. I guess what I would say is, I think what you're going to hear from them, and I'm not going to speak for them.
No, no, no.
I'll let them speak for themselves. I think what you're going to hear from them is is that they landed on giving you a set of recommendations that 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 for most of them look like one of the maps considered as like the final meeting, we set up with a variety of maps to say, where in between these maps do you think would be the principles behind an expand, you know, an expansion recommendation that council should think about? We, you know, we weren't presenting map alternatives to pick, like you have to pick one, two, three or four. But what they ended up doing was kind of saying, both all of them saying, we like aspects of this particular map, some more very specifically than others. So what they're going to come to you with is a combination of the priorities and principles behind the map they all liked, as well as comment about specifically this, this map resonated with all of us. We're not saying do this map. But we're saying we really like the principles behind what led to this map. So maybe opportunity, maybe it's a different meeting later where where you take what you heard as principles or a specific map or some combo and and kind of work on it. But you're not going to hear a very specific map that they're going to point to and say, do this. It's going to be a little more, it's not going to be quite that firm, concrete sort of thing.
And just to clarify, planning commission will be there also for the Q and A portion, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, because, yeah, because Commissioner Bonzi, I think it was, I talked with her, she had a lot of input as well.
Yeah, no, both, all of you will be there in at least 30 minutes.
Yeah, I think that sounds great. Thank you so much for the the information. I I would love to to see as part of the agendas, you know, maybe some goals and purpose. But I think we're already well aligned on what that session is going to look like and I'm looking forward to it. All right. Um, that brings us to new business where we put a placeholder from earlier. I think. Um, that brings us to new business where we put a placeholder from earlier, I think.
And so I received an Oregon government ethics complaint and I'd like to be able to use um the specific email provided to you tonight. Um, in my defense, although I believe most of the context of the email uh was discussed in open public meeting. I'd like to ask council to officially waive the attorney client privilege to the extent that it still exists.
Thank, thank you so much for raising that point. I'd also like to just provide additional context. Um, that was received from one of our city attorneys. Thank you very much for being here. Um, that had um. Stressed that, yes, this was um as an email covered under attorney client privilege, but because the contents of the email had already been discussed in public session. Chad was not concerned with releasing this to the public. There is no privileged information that remains in the email.
Yeah, I have a question to the attorney. Um, what's the risk of waiving it?
Um, I think the risk is relatively low. I think the issue is accurately summarized that there was a request to use this email, which is officially covered by attorney client privilege in defense. Um, my understanding is that most if not all of the context contents of this email have been discussed in public. And then likely the attorney client privilege is, has already been waived. But because the council is the body that actually holds the privilege, you're the only body that has the ability to officially waive it. And if this is going to be used in defense and potentially submitted for the public filing. I think the idea was to make sure that there's no surprises down the line and if anybody does have concerns, give them the opportunity to express them before the document becomes public.
So where is the privilege just for this email that's in front of us and only this?
I'm sorry, that text of the email.
The privilege is for this email and only this email, correct?
Yeah, specifically what's printed. Do we feel like we need further discussion or has this been summarized clearly? I don't see an issue with this. I, you know, our, our attorneys have reviewed it. This was already discussed in extreme depth in public. I have no issues here.
Mayor, I just want to make sure that I end up, that I do answer counsel, um, counsel McCall Wallace's question. I mean, the risk is that there's something in the email that a member of the council feels that was not already discussed in public and would not want to be released in public. And again, I wasn't necessarily involved in all those conversations. I can tell you that it is Chad's opinion that most, if not all of this had already been discussed.
Thank you.
So at this point, what do you need from council? Just a consensus?
My preference would be a vote to waive the privilege. I typically like a roll call vote when we're taking an official action.
And do and kind of an annual refresh on those. Which wouldn't take quite as much time, or if you would rather go through and do kind of a brand new whole, whole cloth goal setting, that would take up more time of the day, still can be done. So it's kind of, kind of boils down to those, those two options regarding goal setting for the day. And I just kind of wanted to hear from you all about that so that I work with, work on scoping it appropriately to make sure the day works the way you want. One thing I will say in terms of scoping this out is Steve, part of his scope would be to meet with you as you're comfortable individually for a while and just kind of try to draw as much from your brain. So he's not showing up, A, just meeting you that day and B, hearing everything new from you and trying to shoehorn it into something. So he would, so unlike also League of Oregon Cities, they wouldn't show up and do everything in a day, leave. He would start out in advance and meet with you each and just kind of get to know you and see what you hope to get out of the day. And try to, you know, get all of that in. So that would be part of the process. So it does make bigger, kind of newer goal setting easier to do with a limited amount of time because he would, he would approach it that way. So it's doable. I just, I just wanted to kind of get your, your direction on all that, that's all.
My direction would be to go a whole cloth. We have a brand new city council that has a very dated agenda and I want them to feel efficient by the, by the past. So with another.
I appreciate that, James. And I absolutely concur. I, I have a strong preference that we, we focus on the visioning as that applies to strategy, you know, it's going to be related to community, committee projects, budget investments, ways of working, you know. It, it really is the nexus of every, everywhere we go from here. So I think let's keep that a priority from my perspective.
That's, I, I agree. I'd like to see the, I mean, I think the framework is good, there's a framework, an existing framework to work from. But that, that we need to look at it as a whole.
Great.
Does that give you what you?
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, unless somebody is just sitting and dying to, to dissent. I don't see that, but, but I appreciate it. Thank you. No, I just want to make sure we get it planned and it gets the most, the most is, is, is brought out of it for you all. So that's the main thing.
Fantastic. Um, the only other thing that I wanted to, to ask about was you mentioned in the staff report, legislature was approving some Glencoe Opportunity Area brownfield remediation. Do you have any kind of an update you can share on that?
Well, yeah, so the same, the same legislative process that Senator Weber identified was very low probability for the food bank. That exact same process is what we're going to apply under for about nine hundred ten thousand dollars to basically for all the remediation of the brownfield issues on the, on the Glencoe Opportunity Area property. The, the need for it went before the last legislative session, the short session. So folks in Salem are familiar with the issue. So this time around, sometimes just coming back. Because they're reminded and they're familiar already is great. Sometimes if you're annoying enough, they'll award it so you'll go away. Either way, we'll take advantage of familiarity, you know, whether it's contempt or love, we'll, we'll take it. Familiarity is good. So, um, yeah, so that's what, that's, that's the process we're going for, going forward. And, and like, like was mentioned earlier, it'll be June before we hear anything, but the alternative to the funding from the legislature, basically a grant award like that, the alternative is taking out a is for the Urban renewal agency to take out a low cost or even no cost loan that may or may not be forgivable. And it's money to dispose of dirt. It's not a loan to put in infrastructure or put in lasting improvements. It's just money to dispose of dirt. So we'd rather do it with grant money if possible, rather than having to borrow to do it.
Just to clarify, so that, so it would be a general obligation bond, I'm assuming?
Um, it would just be an allocation from the state. The state drops nine hundred ten.
If we don't get that one, you're saying a low cost or no cost loan?
Um, yeah, we, we would know. We would just basically go to the Oregon Brownfield Fund, Oregon, the Business Oregon, the department has a brownfield fund. No, no, it's okay. Uh, no, Business Oregon has a brownfield fund. Um, and for big, for projects that get over a hundred thousand or whatever, um, that starts getting into improvements and, and programs that would require a loan, that fund is the one that's helped grant fund, you know, studying hazardous material or identifying hazardous materials and planning and that sort of thing, but getting into the improvements in place, that's when you get into the big dollar stuff.
And these low just funds are not always, but often forgivable.
Yeah.
So that is
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Bill?
Mayor, I just have a, a really quick, um, something to share. So during public comment, there was some comments about public meeting laws in Oregon. And I just wanted to make sure that every member of the council was aware that at one point during your term, you needed to take a OGEK approved public meetings training course. This is new, a new law that came to effect in twenty twenty-three. Right now that there's only one entity that is offering them and that is actually OGEK. But I got a training approved from OGEK today. And we are going to be offering that for our clients on the, I'm sorry, on March twentieth and it's going to be recorded. So you can watch it at your leisure. You'll need to certify that you have taken it. It is going to be two hours on public meetings laws and regulations. I like to say are a real bar burner. Um, but we'll go through everything that you need to announce. We'll be putting out announcements about that. Um, you can also take it from OGEK. It's free. And I'm going to guess the League of Oregon Cities is also going to offer it. So no matter where you take it, you should just be aware of your obligation to do so.
Is it going to be a WPT?
I'm sorry?
Where based training?
It will be a WPT, yes, a web, a web based training.
Super. Thank you very much for sharing that opportunity with us. Um, if we did take it through BH, it sounds like there is a cost associated?
No. It will be, uh, it will be just one of our, our online streams that you can have on YouTube channel. You will take some steps to verify that you watched all of it.
That's right. Um, and I would love if we could share that information either directly with council or through Bill, but let's make sure that we give away the details. Super. Thank you very much. Appreciate you bringing that up. Um, council reports.
Uh, I had the pleasure of attending the Parks Board. And it was a pretty brief meeting. Um, and Dustin or Bill, correct me if I'm wrong. But some of the, the general discussion was around bringing a fee onto the water bill to pay for some of the mowing of the grass obligations we have within the city. Which my understanding is it was a, a five dollar seventy-one percent or five dollars seventy-one cent fee on the water bill to help cover the cost for that. And the scope of the costs, again, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, was about a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand to be able to contract that work out, which sounds like the more cost effective way instead of potentially hiring FTEs through the city. And I think general consensus is really around that budget work for the Parks, the Parks Board and just Parks Department in general being able to, to fund, you know, those, those obligations we have with grass. Also discussion about fee rentals for Jesse Mays, which we talked about a little bit tonight. Um, and I think just overall, I think there can be a lot of benefits to a, a work session with the Parks Board. I think some of the general consensus I was hearing was we want to do this, but we need council approval. We want to do this, but we want to know what council thoughts are. So I think there's a lot of benefit to that. And I know there's a, a large agenda for all the boards and commissions, but I just really want to highlight that partnership to the forefront of our, our agendas.
Thank you so much.
I'll go. Um, on the fifth, I had the opportunity to sit with the Economic Development Committee as a, as a co. And one of the big projects we're working on is rolling out a survey to collect some insights for all of our self businesses registered in North Plains. And so in about the next month, in addition to collecting those insights and, and synthesizing the information, they plan to come back if there's any call to action with recommendations to be canceled. So that's great. And then as a disclosure, effective last week, I was appointed as a board member to the North Plains Food Bank. And it is deemed by our C attorney that I have a conflict of interest and any issue brought about to this body by, by the North Plains Food Bank, I will definitely recuse myself.
I don't necessarily want you to jump in on that call, but in general, we have had council members previously who were members of boards with our other North Plains entities, and that has not been a conflict of interest. So I'm interested in your perspective.
So the final arbiter of the conflict of interest is Oregon Government Ethics Commission, and I can't provide any legal advice that's personal to any counselor. But you have a conflict of interest under Oregon's Board of Government Ethics laws when you are relative or business which you're associated with as a financial, basically a financial interest in a decision that you would make in your official role. It's a potential conflict of interest if the decision may result in a financial benefit or detriment to you, your business or your relative. And in actual conflict of interest, the decision or action would definitely happen financially impact on you, your relative or business which you're associated. If you're sitting on the nonprofit board and that is a voluntary position and you receive no, no compensation of any kind, then that is generally not considered a business which you're associated with.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Yep, that said, and then, yes.
I go next. So I attended planning commission. Um, it was very well reheated. Stewart wants a very tight ship and impressed. There's a couple of things about Frank's excavating permit is about to expire, but it sounds like Steve and, and Rowan are taking care of that. We're almost on the phase five on Brenhill. I believe permits were submitted. And if I could get somebody to read my writing, that'd be great. Uh, oh, the RAC meeting. We talked a little about that. There were some discussion around the boundaries and around zoning and Vice Chair Lamonte brought up that, or brought the discussion to our attention that what comes out of RAC isn't necessarily, if, what they suggest as commercial, industrial and residential, the final say comes to planning which I was, it helped me understand a lot better once she explained that. Um, there was a little bit of debate about that and then we finally got to the bottom of that and it made a lot more sense. Little bit of discussion around acreage and some of the maps. And then see, oh, there's a question about some of the curb painting and post boxes from one of the commissioners, which is being addressed by city staff. And then some discussion around making sure we keep water rights to Dairy Creek. Because there, it, they created a manmade lake. We want to make sure we don't lose water rights, which made a lot of sense. So that was most of it. And then also the other thing, I did attend budget training today for Department of Revenue. If you haven't been, it's fascinating. It was actually pretty interesting stuff. Um, I know budgets, but the government part was pretty cool. Um, they did a great job and I encourage everybody to attend if you can, either online or, or in person. It's, it the budget part's easy, the government part's hard. You gotta understand the government side of things. And now I understand what Dustin and the chief and Robin go through because I'm like, oh, that's why they go, it's a little different than civilians.
All right, super.
Um, I, along with others there, I know attended the Water Services Training that was offered. And it's after nine thirty now, it's nine forty, so I don't really want to go into it. Other than, other than to say it's great. If you don't know your water organization, I invite you to call them up and take a tour. We got to tour the labs. We got to find out a lot of the great things they're doing in terms of making fertilizer and capturing natural gas, et cetera. Um, for review, so go, go with it.
And this Friday, I've been doing National Engineers Week over at North Plains Elementary and E three morning thing. I've been teaching the fourth graders, have, well, not be teaching them, we coach them on how to make a little blender.
Cool. Fantastic. Anyone else?
Aaron and I attended.
Oh, yeah.
Yesterday, um, just the beginning part for city elected. Um, there was just a lot of concern about what was coming down from the federal government. I don't know how much that's going to impact our city. Um, at this point, I don't know. Bill has some insight to that.
Um, it's a great question. The only risk right now actively we have is in the new building, the Emergency Operations Center, there's a generator that we were granted the funds to buy by FEMA. And we're working this indirectly. FEMA gave the money to the State of Oregon. The State of Oregon is managing dispersal of those funds. So we're kind of working on a process to try to get all that taken care of it, or, you know, not, not that we're lackadaisical about it, but just there's extra pressure. So, but that's kind of the only thing that we're exposed, we're exposed to right now, really.
The only comment I would have to add with that is that the OEM folks that I talk with, uh, they're basically business as usual and so on and changes. So.
All right, super. Okay, now it is nine forty and I don't want to drag this out, but we had an item on the agenda that's a new new topic that we'll hopefully see here each time called Community Corner. It's something that I requested as a regular opportunity to share feedback from the community. Council can voice initial input. Potentially we would pause until the next meeting so staff can provide options. Um, and it informs ultimately some potential items on the agenda. Or ongoing status updates for things that couldn't be resolved immediately. Um, we would then discuss and delegate to committees as appropriate. And there were a couple of items that I thought might be a good way of testing that process. First of all, we've received quite a lot of feedback about council meeting access and the technology surrounding that. This is something that we can absolutely discuss as a council, but some of the thoughts that I had on the subject were, were potentially to, to schedule a focus group with staff support and access to, to hear in Jesse Mays as well as on Zoom to test options potentially for additional cameras or microphones, which Zoom does have the capability to include. Um, and see whether there are some consumer grade options that might give us additional capacity and functionality while we wait for things like CCTV to really do the official solution on that. We could also experiment with things like table and room configuration that would allow us to use the technology we have. Um, a little more effectively. And the goal there would be to increase visibility and audio for all of council because we have this nice long series of tables and it's been mentioned that folks along the end, um, it's hard for them to be heard. Also making sure that public comment is visible and able to be heard. So if you're amenable to that as a concept for us, having that focus group and experimenting with our technology to see whether we can improve this. Um, then I think our action item out of that would be perhaps for Bill to coordinate it with our schedules. Not saying that everybody needs to be here, but that we have staff access to the building and some folks who are willing to be guinea pigs on Zoom.
Uh, I, I just had a clarifying question. Is my memory sort of me correct that the surplus or, you know, unclaimed money that we had from Oregon unemployment department? The sixty thousand dollars was going to go towards AV improvements here at Jesse Mays for Zoom meeting accessibility. So, uh, Bill, I'll let you explain that, but, but there was first of all, going to be a longer lead time on something like that. Also, I believe that when we talked about it the last time, there were some concerns that CCTV did not provide all of the functionality. For example, Zoom, yeah.
Also that people could comment, you can watch CCTV, but you can't comment on CCTV for us to get the comment.
Thank you for refreshing my memory of what, what that barrier was.
So unless they, unless they came up with something, we thought we might still have to, you know, stick with Zoom. I'm just waiting for that report from Bill.
Oh, yeah. No, thank you. No. And you know what? And I have it written here. You asked me an email and I forgot that after the retreat, the retreat discussion to go back to that. So we are getting two different quality installate, two different level of installation of new equipment here at Jesse Mays. That would still in some way depend in part at least on, on Zoom and, and being able to get comment. The, we had, they, we got an update from, from them last week. We'll be coming back with you with our, with our, our full bids soon. But indeed, the sixty thousand dollars that we did get back from Oregon Employment Department, we, we would be using. We don't know what the costs are going to put the two cost alternatives we're getting on, on improvements here. But the sixty thousand dollars that we're getting, that you okay to put towards the improvements would be to cover kind of the upfront cost to pay for it. And then MAC, the Metropolitan Area Communication Commission, would, we can apply for a grant to pay for at least a part of that that has to do with public meetings, including making owl usage and Zoom usage, whatever's most appropriate, um, to get the comments and run the meeting properly. To get those things reimbursed via a grant, but any improvements that we put in place to make event like, you know, nonprofit events or whatever other usage sound system for dances and things like that, whatever. Those things would not be reimbursed in a grant because those are just miscellaneous community use. Not city government getting a grant to reimburse, uh, for public meetings purposes. So, but I don't, but I don't have a timeframe realistically. Um, I can't say that by June one, this is going to be a brand new Jesse Mays in terms of AV. I don't have that yet. But I'll come back to you when we get those bids and, and idea.
We have an element of stage. Which you have a screen.
That's one of the things that I would love to try out. Exactly. Yep. That's one of the things that's been rattling around in my head. It would make a lot of sense.
And you have the acoustic built in too. And everyone's focused.
Done and done.
Well, the, the thing, the, I think, I think the thing about going through and, and testing it is the challenge that we have is that, kind of getting back to that whole meeting and minutes and everything is we have to make sure that the closed captioning and the recording of the audio are with our system work. And that's why now audio on here isn't great, but people online tend to hear better than they did before we started strictly using this. This also leads to better kind of recording of audio and close captioning and pairing for the, for YouTube video we have to put up. So kind of playing with scenarios and, and seeing what works better comprehensively, at least, you know. I don't mean this in the wrong way, but if, if we have to do kind of a shorter term band-aid or bridge to get to a longer term improvement. But it's tough for us individually as staff to test everything at the same time. And that's why you have you know, some people hear great, others don't. I can't hear this. It, it's, it's a challenge for a member voice.
Yeah, hence the thought of a focus group and let's test it out in a way that staff can't on your own.
Yeah, that's, that's the challenge.
I mean, it seems like staff has a plan for this. I know it'd be great to fix it now, but if it's not on fire.
I think it is unfortunately, based on the feedback that we're getting. And it becomes an equity issue, but if we have people who can't attend in person, but they're also having trouble seeing and hearing online, it's our obligation to make sure that within reasonable effort. You know, when I'm talking about consumer grade, how much did your webcam at home cost? Not very much. And there are ways within the product that we already have licensed Zoom. Um, you know, in five or 10 minutes of Googling to hook up secondary cameras and microphones. It's a setting in Zoom. We just need to experiment and see if we can make it work. I bet considering the number of tech geeks that we have in North Plains, that someone probably even has equipment they might be willing to donate.
I was, I was going to ask is that I'll have the, you know, sort of linking hubs of sound. I mean, that's what we used before. So in another place where we have the one, the main one, and then we have links that go off of it that are connected to it that are also picking up sound. So it's not lost at the end. But I think the other question is, you know, is it on fire? I, I would say no, it's not on fire. We did receive, you know, uh, people talking about it on a Facebook page, on a single Facebook page with a few comments. And I don't think that that really counts as on fire. Is it something we should be responsive to? Yes. Does that mean people need to speak up? Probably. Does that mean that, you know, we look at the placement of where the microphone is or additional microphones? Which is a minimal cost versus, you know, spending a bunch on a whole other setup to be able to mitigate it until we can get the other setup. But it's also letting the public know what the plan is so that they have the anticipation of when that will happen. You know, and whether they come to the meeting or not, kind of thing. They can make a choice between this and this one here.
Yeah, I don't think it's a fire.
So it's nine forty-nine and this truly is not meant to be a rabbit hole that we all collectively go down. But I would hope that with really very minimal effort, we could show up for our community with that responsiveness and show that we've heard them and do some testing. Is there any harm in that? Do we feel like there's a risk in experimenting?
I'd say come in your moving tables around and trying it out different ways to see if it works. Right? As long as we're not a quorum, then I don't think it's a problem.
We don't even need to necessarily be here.
Members to do that, so.
Yeah, I mean, if you're interested, if not, you already come and spend enough time with us and it's okay. I think we can find volunteers, but point being, do we feel like this is reasonable to run a small experiment without investing anything other than time?
I, I just want to chime in. I, I absolutely see both sides. And, you know, to, to your point, right? And we want to be inclusive and equitable to everyone. Um, I also think about, you know, five years ago, we didn't even have a Zoom option, right? You had to attend meetings in person. And I think about the, the bigger picture and, you know, is this just a, a matter of us speaking up and enunciating and making sure that message is clear? And do we have bigger, bigger issues at hand than thinking about FEMA emergency management? Um, just a lot of the key components that are so critical to running a city. But yes, it might be an hour, two hours of a, a focus group, but also that's one or two hours we could spend as a body for our work session to align everyone on the standards or to, you know, tackle a time sensitive FEMA project. Um, so I, I'm, I see both sides and I, I want to be.
This didn't take council time. If this was something that we farmed off to volunteers. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Last thing.
We have an existing, we have several existing advisory groups, that that might be a great thing for the, for the.
So.
I think, I think Deb would love to.
So let's brainstorm a little later on. I'm sure they're going to be thrilled that we have punted their direction. Um, and then the other thing that I was going to mention, which we can discuss more at length in a future agenda item, I'm just teeing it up. Is the other feedback that we got, well, we got lots of feedback, but the other one that seems like it might be a reasonable thing to tackle initially is we were asked about jobs for youth, whether that's teens or young adults in their early twenties. And facilitating some networking opportunities between businesses and available folks who are looking for jobs, potentially some low cost incentive programs that might reward local businesses for hiring local youth and potentially that's something that, again, economic development, we're sending lots of things their way. Might have some ideas for, um, as well as ways to identify those available jobs and how to connect them with applicants. No questions?
Sounds like a great partnership for the chamber.
I, I don't associate anybody's labor though, right? So, but we could try to.
No, but I mean, something like a, a one-time bonus that, hey, you hired for Blackwater Coffee and you hired a local kid and you get X. Find a, find a reasonable a Starbucks gift card to Blackwater Coffee? Probably not, but.
Yeah, it's been fun. Blackwater Coffee and Starbucks.
I'm sorry. I just want to say, you know, I actually really appreciate this idea of this community quarter. I saw these things. I've been following the Facebook pages. You know, I didn't join them because I don't want to overstep and have a comment or we all saw the thing and we're actually taking action on an item right now. So for example, I saw that information. I don't know how many council members did as well. And can tell you, you know, exactly that someone asked for that incentive. Um, so with that though, what I'm, what I'm thinking is that I, I, I really like the idea that we're trying to say, hey, let's be responsive to what people are asking for right this moment. And with the same thing happens with public comment, but we also have a process. You know, so if we're going to do this, it should go on an agenda. So the whole public has a chance to say, you know, yes, we should do this incentive. You know, we should have a grant program for that that we run or that kind of thing, rather than we're trying to solve it here and, and make it happen. And I, and I I, I totally get the problem solving aspect. I tend to go. I I totally get the problem solving aspect. I tend to go right for the problem solving too. Um, but part of it is is that. This role does bring in that process of taking the pause. To to post it, to let the community know, to let them get involved, and that's supposed to be a big part of it, you know, and so. Um, I I I'm not sure that it works this way to do it this way, because right now I'm thinking, oh, we need an agenda item so we can make a vote. On whether we're going, because we couldn't even, we wouldn't be able on a community quarter line item right now. We could not make a motion to to say, yes, we want to do a stipend for these kids, you know?
Right, which is why when I brought it up in the first place, we were talking about kind of that process of. Bringing it up, voicing some initial inputs, sending it off to staff or to another committee, and then it would come back as an agenda item.
If we're gonna make Facebook our like your, like a vector channel to the, to the city council.
Well, I think it's. It's been something which. Again, the community has voiced pretty loudly that they didn't feel like they were heard at the level of city council previously. And so us opening the door and saying that we're receptive and that we want to engage in conversation. About issues that are important to our community, I think really gives us that. Um, that credit within our community that when we then need to bring forward other initiatives or other programs. That we're socializing with built trust and we've shown that we are actively trying to partner with our constituents.
We we haven't had the conversation to really talk about the social media pieces either because um, we have a social media page. We have the city of. Of North Plains, we have a North Plain app, we have those sort of things. Uh, but then now there's also several pages that are individual pages acting as city pages, they say they're city pages. And so, um, you know, for me, I've caught like, oh, you know, personal. Personal points of view by votes without or personal points of view by a single council member go out, you know, is that. You know, do now, do I need to start a page so I can talk about what I did and why I voted the way I did? Because the reality is we're a body. And so the end of the day, we had one vote. I know there was a comment made that four voted yes, two voted no, or whatever it was. Or four voted yes, three no, and it passed. And it's like, but the reality is the council voted yes in the end of the day. And we are one body. And so I have a question about, you know, are we going to be operating these social media pages to gather misinformation to bring to council? Is that the way to do that?
Um, I would actually love it if it were a city process.
That work.
Suggestion box?
Yeah, I would love it if that's a city process, but since we still have some upcoming agenda items, I'm sure to talk about. Comms and city accounts and the newsletter and the other methods that the city can use to engage with folks. I think, again, we're, we're looking at short range and long range solutions. And right now, the opportunity that we have in front of us is to meet people where they're at and engage with them. Granted, Facebook is not the be all end all. There's people who use all sorts of other different platforms that I, as an old person, don't, but. Um. It's trying to move the needle in a positive direction, trying to show effort. And frankly, that we care.
Yeah, I agree. I just want to know how we're gonna do it as a body.
So I think that would be maybe a great thing for you and I to work with as a side project to come up with what that process can look like. Would you be willing to partner with me on that?
On the process that will have the social media?
Uh, the the community corner, how we tee it up. Look, here's an idea and we're gonna. Potentially send this off to staff and send this off to committee, and this is how we get it onto an agenda item. How about we work on that together?
Uh, that's fine. I think that, you know, it's, it's basically what you're saying is, you know, we we want, we want to have an agenda item without having an agenda item. Because all the things that you talked about and you heard about could have been put on the agenda as agenda items. That's exactly what the agenda is for. If you say, oh, I'd like to have a discussion about. Youth working in the community, or I'd like to have a discussion about, you know, sound and media in the Jesse Mays center and what we can do, what actions we can take on that. And so that's an agenda item. So, right, and I I understand wanting to make it happen faster. But we already have a process by law that we're supposed to go through. So I get caught in the middle a little bit because it's like, well, do we just do this on the side and then, you know. Get it done in a sense versus do we go through the actual process of setting agenda items, notifying the public and discussing it?
To to to, as we try to cut this short, I think what Ariel was trying to suggest is that we have a discussion in order to put things onto the agenda.
That's different than having.
Right.
Movement corner. So, because that could be simply, are there any items for future agenda? And then we all put them forward and we go on future agenda.
Yeah, so why don't we, it's nine fifty-nine, we're gonna, no, it's ten o'clock. Never mind, we didn't get out of here before ten. Um, I was gonna say, why don't we pull this conversation into a work session with the two of us? And I believe we have reached, no, we have a council calendar. We need to review a council calendar.
I I would like to at least book two more, or two more council meeting work sessions, given topics that you all are um, discussing. So, um, but right now on March third, we have the UGB Reluctant Committee as a work session. On March seventeenth, um, we were, we were asked to be prepared and make sure you're still interested, but to have a work session to discuss. Ordinance four ninety and then some background or some um, um, discussion of the economic opportunities analysis. And the, why do I have HOA instead of HNA? The housing needs analysis, not HOA. Um, and so that was, uh, that's still scheduled for the seventeenth. Um, we're, so in April, um, what I would like to do is just uh. Get some work sessions scheduled because of all the topics I know that you you want to get into. There are three topics um, that. Have have been before you, and I just want to get at least two of them down for April. One. Is a while back Dustin um, mentioned that with budget season and public works, him kind of working on public works and planning capacity. He wanted to have a work session with you all to kind of go over um, a variety of things, just to get you up to speed and also some more um, context for budget. Among other things, um, go ahead.
Does April give you enough time? Does that feel like too late to have that? I mean. I'm asking.
Um, the only dates that I'm gonna be gone in April are after Easter, so it'd have to be the beginning of April.
April seventh would be. If you don't want to move the ordinance four ninety EOA and HNA work session.
It's kind of what I'm wondering whether we should. Be sensitive to the budget cycle.
That would be March seventeen. As opposed to April seventh.
If I can push it forward, I I'm totally for that.
Okay, and can I propose maybe that we split that work session on the seventeenth? I don't think we necessarily need an hour to talk about um, kind of an initial look at those documents and maybe we could put Dustin in the other half.
Uh, I think we should just move Dustin moves seventeen, March seventeenth.
Move those documents. Immediate on any of those.
Yeah, because we have budget and it's gonna hit fast.
I'm not sure why they would be on a work session.
Okay. So now I have public works on um, March seventeenth. So um, then April seventh and April twenty-first, um, you have the um. The city land need documents, EOA, HNA, and then ordinance four ninety still out there at this point. The other two items are um, that were mentioned a little while ago by the mayor, the first one being um. Um, the city has a communications plan um, that was originally adopted in. Twenty twenty-three, no, twenty twenty-two, it got a, got a uh, tweak addition or modification in twenty twenty-three. Um, the time has come to take a new look at it and kind of go over all that. And that would be a great work session topic because then you can kind of see how implementation of the plan has been in the past. And depending on how you want to, you would like modifications for a new revised plan to be brought forward to you. Then we can go over kind of all that in a work session. So that would be one of them. Though what I would recommend sooner rather than later, the other one being the code. Um, going over city code uh, enforcement issues. We we have a bunch of places in code where it's challenging to apply, you know, apply enforcement for code issue. And then once we want to try to do enforcement, what's the, how do we, you know. Questions of the fee and this, that and the other. So there's just, there are improvements on that side of things that. Should begin with the work session to go over all that. And so Chief and I will be ready for that, depending on which of those April dates you'd like to do that. Um, so those would be the the two, those will be the two things in addition to the ordinance four ninety EOA, HNA that you just bought.
Okay.
I think code enforcement has come up a lot. It would be nice to get that on the seventh, we could, but that's just my.
I second that. Do we feel like both of these items are a full hour?
Um, I think, I think the communications plan for sure um, should be just because there's just a lot, I mean, a lot of different social media and get into that. So I, you know, and then you've got, yeah. So I I think that can be, I think that the code enforcement thing um, could be, I think that's one where. Having the city attorney there because there, you're talking about potentially a number of different ordinances. To change code in different places, so that might get a lot of legal questions sort of thing, so it could run into an hour. Um, I don't know that that could be done in thirty minutes, I guess, the bottom line.
And my preference, I I hear you on the code enforcement, um.
We don't, they're gonna decide.
I think the comms plan is also something that has come up several times. Do we have? Strong feelings about which one goes first and second?
Does any have any preference?
No, not really. I mean, the, if I seen if we did the codes up later in the month, just gives us more time to prep and be ready for that, but I'm sure we have enough time. To now then probably knock out, so I I guess they don't. Do we want to kind of code, uh, if they, if they're gonna enforce codes like. Coverage cans, I think, whatever, whatever codes we have in there, are they definitely enforce those? I mean, catch my legend, or is that? Yeah, so if it's a, it's a city code, if anybody's working here in the city, can enforce city code. Okay.
Yeah. Um. Anyone have strong opinions? Okay, and I'm gonna say let's do comms on the seventh and code enforcement on the twenty-first.
We do.
All right. Any other calendaring that we need to do?
Um, not me at this point, not really. That gets us through May. I guess the only other thing I would add is that um, we do have a presentation coming up. This isn't. Um, this isn't anything that you have to act on, but on March seventeenth, Rachel Schutz and um. Judy Willie will be here just basically to do their annual report on the Family Justice Center. Um, and Rachel Schutz is actually the spouse of um, Steve Schutz, one of our officers here. So, um, anyway, so they'll both be here to kind of talk about um, annual report and how the city's partnership is, you know, a good thing.
Fantastic. All right. Yes.
Do we have anybody from council going to the chamber meeting? I know it's not offered by Zoom, but. Doesn't, I mean, it's our, I mean, they're important.
It would be helpful. I talked with Stuart Chamber about that. Um, I'm trying to go, but um, it hits straight. Really bad time on my day and I told him that I, I used to go play, have a business, but. It's just a bad time for, I'm just trying to get back to it.
We said. So.
You what?
Russia used to do it all the time.
So he would just kind of hear me.
Yeah.
So I I will say at chamber meetings, staff does give a monthly, just kind of state of the things, what what's going on, but we don't have any existing elected official there, you know. As as a representative vote for the city council.
It's it's my name, it's it's.
So potentially, is that something we could socialize out to council? Because it sounds like there are some. Questions about when those meetings are held and where to find that information. And as well, if staff is already attending, I'd love to get some counselors there as well, but could we also leverage? Staff's already there to provide some communication.
We give out invites on the, on the, on the emails too. I just don't, I haven't looked at it because. Russell's, right, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I guess I would like to reach out to them and ask if they would like it, is it would be the proper term an ex officio?
But.
No.
Or it's not because they're not a.
Yes, it's every second or it's every Tuesday, each month, eleven thirty to twelve or to one thirty. Um, and it's not an ex officio, you'd just be a ten member of council, but they would appreciate if Stuart did that for me and I told them I would try to work it in. I'm trying to fix my schedule.
I generally, I'll do Tuesdays and Monday, or or two, Tuesdays.
I guess.
I always, I always book myself pretty, pretty heavily that I do.
I think it's second, fourth, if I remember right, but I can double check and send it.
It says on our website. The links go to September, so.
Here, the audience pans.
It's the second Tuesday, noon to one.
Thank you. I was close.
Yes. Second Sunday, what's. Second Tuesday of the month from noon to one at the city. All right. They don't serve lunch anymore, but that you serve snacks. No lunch?
I like that you forgot that.
Because I want, I want to have some freedom, but I could probably, I probably use it less.
Thank you for the pro tip about snacks. All right, at this point, does anyone else have anything riveting or can we please make a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
A second.
I. I go home.
Any of those?
Nope.
If you are, you're getting over it.
All right.
Thank you so much, Roland. Please let us know if you have any questions. And we're adjourned at ten ten. It's not too bad. Oh, thanks, please.